Good evening and welcome to the ninth meeting of fiscal year 2025 for the Milton Planning Board. I would like to now call the meeting to order and begin by introducing the members of the board and our staff. If you would like to start.
Mike Yolfield, member.
Cheryl Tagaya, Secretary.
Jim Davis, Member.
And Meredith Hall, serving as Chair. Sean Fahy cannot be with us this evening. And now to introduce, and Julia's here. Yeah. Yeah, I'll introduce this. So Tim?
Tim Zierwinski, Director of Planning and Community Development.
Cheyenne? She's muted. Okay, and Julia? Julia, great, thank you so much. So we'll first start with the approval of the meeting minutes from August 16th. Cheryl had sent around some edits on that. Has anyone had a chance to review those?
Yep, and I'm good to come.
I'm good with them too.
And same here. So if I could have a motion to approve the meeting minutes from August 16th?
Some moved?
Second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
All right.
Great. Discussion of next meeting dates. We have on our agenda, we have our next meeting dates, October 10th and the 24th, correct? Will be our next.
10th and the 24th?
The 10th and the 24th are our next regularly scheduled meeting dates. So we're letting some people come in here.
We can, I think we can take a couple of seats back.
Do you want to take a?
Take those couple of seats back.
That's. And Julia, you can go. Great, and Tabor, yeah, feel free to take a chair, so that's great, or a couple of those extra chairs. So our next item on the agenda is the Director of Planning and Community Development. Tim, for your update?
Thank you, Meredith. My update is actually also related to scheduling next meeting dates. So Cheyenne and I had a staff level kickoff meeting with the MAPC team that's working on our economic development plan. We had signed a contract with MAPC over the summer anticipating a September kickoff, and we're ready to get moving on this, on this planning effort. We had talked a couple months ago at this point about, you know, which public board would be kind of the, effectively the steering committee for this plan. And I think it was the sentiment of the, of the board that, that the planning board wanted to sort of have its hand on the tiller, as it were. So we had a good meeting with MAPC this morning with the Economic Development Team. We've got a great scope of work. They've got, you know, a good plan to kind of do a lot of outreach, a lot of research, a lot of analysis. They would like to come in to the Planning Board to present, you know, what their plan is for the planning process, to get feedback. They have a lot of questions for, for you all. And so I let them know that our next two regularly scheduled meetings were going to be the 10th and the 24th. The 10th works for, for them. And then the 24th does not. So if we do want to have that, our consultant team in for a kickoff meeting with the board to get some initial feedback and kind of direction from the board, it would be great if we could do that on the 10th. If not, I think bringing them in for the, what, what looks to be the first regularly scheduled meeting in November would be the 14th. So I know that there's a lot of stuff on the agenda tonight. There's going to be a lot of stuff on the agenda for the foreseeable future. So I think, you know, figuring out where we can fit this in so that our consultant team can get moving, I think would be good. So I would, I would leave that up to you all to decide, you know, when we can give the MAPC team a little bit of space on the agenda to, you know, present their thinking and to get some feedback from the board.
Did, Tim, did he, did they give you an idea of how much time they would allot to that kickoff?
So, um, so they, they have a presentation, but the presentation is, is interactive. So it is going to require a little bit of back and forth, a little bit of discussion among the board. I think it would be great to give them 45 minutes to an hour, just to sort of, you know, again, be able to give them the opportunity to kind of go back to the shop, design their outreach plan, kind of focus their research. If, if, if that's too much for the 10th, what I would ask is at least some time on the agenda, just so they can introduce themselves and, you know, just get a little bit of input so they can start moving so that we're not kind of laying fallow, you know, for, for the entire month of October.
I think that sounds fine. The question is, would we want to add just a special meeting just to have the kickoff for MAPC? And just have like an hour meeting at some point where we could just focus on that separately? Or, but obviously the 24th would not work for them, so it would have to be in between sometime. I would be fine with having them come, put them on the agenda, introduce them, and have them come the first meeting in November. And if we have to add a meeting at some point, we could possibly do that.
Okay. We will do that, and, and, and yeah, just, you know, just a little bit of time. So it would be a sort of a really truncated version of their presentation and a kind of maybe a quick kind of back and forth with the board, just to, again, to, to get some high level input for them to, to go back to the shop and work on. So I will report that back, and yeah, we will see them on the 10th.
Okay. I was thinking, would it be possible to start the meeting a half an hour earlier to allow enough time for them rather than having a separate meeting?
I would be fine with that if members.
Yeah, 6:30.
Yeah. 6:30, does that work for you? All right, Tim, could you hear that?
Yeah, so we want to start at 6:30 on the 10th?
On the 10th, just to give a little bit more time for them to not be rushed.
Okay.
And just, can I ask a question? And I know what the answer is going to be. I know we signed a contract with them, but if we've been following the amicus briefs that have been submitted to the AGs in, that don't support the Town of Milton's position, MAPC wrote one to support the Attorney General's position. So personally, it's sort of left a bad taste in my mouth that we have a consultant, a paid consultant, who is sort of actively working against the Milton residents. So my question is, is that a conflict? And I know there are different issues, but it's still one company?
I mean, is, is it a conflict? I mean, there's conflicts all over. We're, you know, in a conflict with the Attorney General right now, and we still kind of exist within state government. I mean, I, I think that, you know, we, the, the fact of the matter is we have a contract. I don't think it would be responsible to break that contract. I think that, you know, the, the, the leadership at MAPC has a mission, and they feel that, you know, their, their, their commentary on that case is consistent with their mission. But I think there's a lot of elements to regional planning that have nothing to do with our, you know, exploits at the SJC. And I think that, you know, this plan, we have worked with them to put together a scope of work that I think is very good. They are highly capable. They have done this work in other towns. And I think the fact of the matter is, just like any other consultant, you know, they work for us. Our contract, you know, puts us squarely in the driver's seat and has a scope of work that, that we worked out, you know, specifically to kind of meet what we feel are the needs of the town. So I have every confidence that they'll be able to do a good job, and I don't think we should be concerned that there's any sort of, you know, ulterior anything going on. I think that they'll, they'll, they'll do a fine job, just like they've done fine work for us in the past, over the, you know, decades that we've had a relationship with the Regional Planning Agency.
Thank you, Tim. Anything else on your update?
No, we're all set for now.
Okay, great. So at this time, we can now open our citizen speak. If there's anyone from the public who would like to speak, you will have the opportunity to speak during the public hearing. If it's something, if you can't stay, feel free to join us at this time. But if it is a public hearing, you will also have time to, to speak and address the board. So if there's anyone who would like to speak and come forward, yeah.
Oh, my name is John Coehn. I'm a Select Board Member, Town Meeting Member, and I live on Antwerp Street. I hope I'm speaking at the right time for this.
It's fine, yes, yep, yep, that's fine.
I read that. Good evening. I'd like to thank the Planning Board for giving you time and looking out for what's best for the town, and to those in attendance, both in person and remotely, for being involved to accomplish the same. I'd like to start by saying that Mike has always been good neighbor, and I'm sure will be here too. And by telling a story about how I lost a beautiful sunset to a neighbor of mine who added a second story over their house that they had every right to do, I totally understand, and I, I put my tongue on that one because they, they could do it. They should be, they were allowed, but I miss my sunset. So change is inevitable, but needs to be managed. And in this case, we should keep it to what they have the current right to do, especially in this case where the business is located predominantly in a residential zone. My understanding is that as it stands, with variances granted, the hours for the restaurant would be 6:30 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., Monday through Saturday, and 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. on Sundays and holidays. And since this restaurant is in what will, is a residentially zoned area, it is like, unlike other restaurants in Milton, and should keep to these hours. Another requirement to minimize the impact would be to close the area of the parking lot after 7:00 p.m. in the area closest to abutting neighbors, abutting residences, and to close the access from Antwerp because longer hours, especially after a couple of glasses of wine, will tempt more people than already do to take the, coming out of the parking lot on Antwerp Street, take the right where they're not supposed to. There's signage, but it's not always obeyed and very difficult to enforce. I prefer easily enforceable regulations, hours of operation and parking, rather than abstract, difficult-to-enforce promises like combined deliveries that I've heard mentioned. There will be impacts even with these residential restrictions in what is typically a quiet time at the end of the day for all abutting neighbors. So sacrifices are being made. Yes, change is inevitable, but everybody has rights that need to be protected, and people that live in the area deserve consideration when making changes. Thank you.
John, before you go, can you repeat the hours that you read?
6:30 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., Monday through Saturday, and 9:00 to 6:00 p.m. Sundays. That was in one of the variances. I was at Town Hall today.
And that was for which?
That was for the restaurant. That was for just the restaurant.
The restaurant that?
The plate, that was the original plates variance, yes, yeah.
Was the, there was a restaurant there before the plate? What does that, what is, what, do you know if those hours were also the same?
This, actually, the 6:30 a.m. was an expansion from the previous ones. The previous ones, I think, were 8:00 a.m. So this was an expansion earlier. The other hours, they only mentioned the 6:30 a.m. because the other hours didn't change. But that's.
Okay, and so you're suggesting that this is, those hours should be what?
Should be kept.
Okay, thanks, John.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak now, or you will be able to speak during the public hearing too?
We have some folks on the Zoom as well, Meredith.
That's what I just was going to ask. All right, now let's go to Zoom, and Tim, if you could introduce those on Zoom.
Eric Okinson, if you can give us your name and address for the record, please?
Eric Okinson, 583 Elliott Street. Thanks for the opportunity to speak. I'm going to talk about MBTA community zoning. I've been following the, the Planning Board's renewed efforts on the zoning, but recent conversations that I've had with neighbors underscore the need for the Planning Board to re-engage residents on this matter, preferably through topic-specific meetings, hearings, workshops, whatever is, is preferable. Residents need to have their voices heard while also being educated about the current status of the zoning, the trade-offs between the different districts and densities, so that we're ready to move forward with whatever the, the SJC rules. A vote on a single zoning bylaw, combined with the preferences of Planning Board members and the desires of individual property owners, is insufficient to develop zoning with such a widespread and significant effect on the town. More specifically, having reviewed the most recent presentation from ETO, it's not clear that omitting all of the East Milton districts can result in compliance, besides being contrary to the district scorecards developed by the board and generally accepted planning practices. Further, increasing the Elliott Street corridor density must be done appropriately to avoid incentivizing teardowns or unnecessary increases in impervious surfaces. Allowing more units and smaller parcels than previously contemplated requires precise and thoughtful dimensional standards. While I personally support additional density in the Elliott Street corridor, based upon these conversations with my neighbors, the board shouldn't assume widespread support if the zoning isn't done properly. This emphasizes the urgent need for intentional engagement with residents, which I urge the Planning Board to begin as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Tim, that's her. Others?
We have Christine Hodlin. Christine, if you can give us your name and address for the record?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, welcome, Christine, yeah.
Thank you, yeah. My address is 112 Maple Street, Milton. And I also just wanted to speak to the MBTA communities. I think like all of us, we're hoping that we're going to have a decision about the lawsuits soon. And I look forward to, you know, some updated zoning that will comply with, with that decision, you know, whichever way that goes. And I appreciate that the Planning Board has been doing a lot of work and conversations around the districts and how to change the districts. But I just have a few questions on some of the work that you've done. I know that there was a survey that was done, and I'm sure we would have all liked more participation, but I was just curious, how is this survey and any of the results informing your decisions or your thoughts on moving forward on the zoning? And as Eric referred to, the scorecards that you have, I haven't seen the, the results of the scorecard, and I'm wondering if they have been shared with the public, because I think it would be very interesting to us all to know for each of the districts how they held up against the scorecards and the rating that was, that was proposed. I, you know, did participate or listened in the Planning Board's when you decided on the scorecard. So I think that would be very helpful as well for the public to all understand what the results of those were and how those are being used, and, and get some input as well from the public. I also live in the Elliott Street corridor. I'm happy that, that you're looking to try to remove some of the density and major concern that seemed to be existing around the Granite, Granite Avenue. But I am a little concerned that all of that is being pushed down to the Elliott Street corridor and to not to other parts of the town. So again, I think some open conversation with the neighborhood, with, and with the public around some of the decisions that you're looking to try to make would be very helpful. So I'm not sure when the proposal for another zoning, if that's going to happen in the spring, but, you know, the time, the time clock is always clicking. So I would appreciate if there would be any information on the timeline when you're looking to have that kind of information, or those kind of public sessions held. So, and that's it. I thank you very much, all of you, for your work on this very difficult topic, so.
Thank you, Christine.
We have Marie Richards. Marie, if you can give us your name and address for the record?
Is she muted?
Marie, you're, you're with us. If you unmute, you can talk to the board.
Hi, can you hear me now?
Yes, welcome, Marie.
Okay, sorry. My name is Marie Richards. I live on 9 Church Street, directly across from Navara in the parking lot. I moved here four years ago, and I chose this location because I like restaurants, cafes, spas, and I think they create a great community. Navara has been an excellent neighbor. I was very surprised to receive a flyer last week that stated a few things that I would like to comment on, one being that there are fights and harassment outside the restaurant after closing. I have never seen or heard any fighting, any yelling, or have had any disturbances from this restaurant. People leave the restaurant quietly. The flyer said that there are bottles being dumped in the dumpster from 10 till midnight. I have never heard bottle noise from the dumpster. They say cars block driveways. I have two driveways, one on either side of my house, and no one blocks them. Navara is kept very clean outside. They do an excellent job running both their restaurants, which I frequent often, and they also employ people from the community who are very polite and very hardworking. I hope that the neighbors will support Navara's efforts in opening a new location at the Food Center. I can assure you that they are true experts in this business and are very caring about their neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you, Marie.
That's it.
Right, and there will be time to speak during the public hearings on both. So with that, we can now move to open our first public hearing, which is Zero Blue Hill Ave, Parcel B 7-5, Site Plan Approval, otherwise known as the Gardner School. And welcome the team to join us here.
I, I would ask anyone from the Gardner School team that's on the Zoom, if you could raise your hand, and I'll add you to the, the panel?
So I think they're all in person, Tim.
Great.
The presentation? We need a bigger table.
Okay.
Great, welcome.
Thanks. My name's Chris Bazin, and I'm here on behalf of Viking Development LLC, out of Franklin, Tennessee. Before I get into the project, I'll give you a little bit about us, Gardner School. Academically focused preschool nationwide, focuses on kids six weeks to five years old. Currently, 37 schools in Kentucky, Tennessee, Ohio, Illinois, Minnesota, Colorado, DC, Virginia, and four schools in construction here in Massachusetts. Hours of operation, 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., Monday through Friday. No operation Saturday or Sundays. We offer two-day, three-day, and full-week enrollment options. Something I want to note because it comes up often, drop-off and pickup schedule. There's no set pickup schedule or drop-off schedule. Parents are free, you know, whether it's doctor's appointments, just a late start, leaving early for a vacation. It's a staggered drop-off of, of whatever fits their schedule. With that, I will tell you, we have done parking studies and parking utilization to kind of indicate that there are peak hours. So we do see the, the highest usage of parking between 7:00 a.m. and 9:30 a.m., and then 3:30 p.m. and 6:00 p.m.
Okay, can you repeat the morning?
7:00 a.m. to 9:30 a.m.
Thank you.
So far in this process, we've held the pre-op meeting with the town in July. We held the neighborhood meeting end of August, about the same time we made the site plan application for this meeting. I've engaged with Planning Department, with Public Works, and started to coordinate peer review, stormwater peer review, and traffic peer review. We've met with the neighbors, as I mentioned. We have a list of feedback that they provided us at that meeting that night. I want to make it clear that the plans you've been provided, that you're seeing, that the peer reviewers are seeing, it's all the same set of plans. So at this point, we have a list of feedback and items to take back and look at, but we're all looking at the same set of plans. So site intro, we're located between 665 Blue Hill Ave and 711 Blue Hill Ave. 6.87 acre site with about 400 linear feet of frontage on Blue Hill Avenue, .3 miles north of the Bradley Atherton Blue Hill intersection, and .4 miles south of the Robin Street and Blue Hill intersection. Existing conditions, it's naturally wooded, has significant slopes, about 33 to 50% slopes from west to east towards Blue Hill Avenue. There's an existing area of ponding. We won't call it stormwater management, but there is kind of a designated area there in our southeast corner. Under the proposed condition, we're looking at a 16,000 square foot childcare center with a 4,500 square foot playground to the north side of it. Parking lot include 57 spaces and be accessed at the northeast corner by a single full movement access. In the color rendering, here you can see our, shows some proposed trees landscaping along the edges, as well as kind of the, the Google aerial of the existing trees that are there. We've done the best we can, the maximum extent possible, to kind of limit our disturbance and, and minimize what we disturb. And so you'll see there are quite a few walls, and we'll point them out a little bit more as, as we keep talking about this. But those were kind of critical in trying to minimize our disturbance and maintain sort of the green area that we can. We're aware of the abutters to our north and our south. As you can see here with, with the trees, we, we do make an effort. We're aware that, that in this situation, the abutters, you know, have concerns about light and noise. And so we do our best to provide multiple layers of protection. We have a retaining wall, we have fencing, we've planted new trees, we've taken a tree survey to identify the existing trees, as, as well as, you know, grading of slopes and all of that. So, so we do feel that there is protection for light, noise, all of that to our abutters. As I mentioned, we completed a tree survey. It identified everything, three inches in diameter and bigger. That was provided to you last week, I believe, maybe beginning of this week. Civil engineering team developed a comprehensive stormwater management design that pretreats and infiltrates runoff up to the 100-year storm event. And then the last thing is lighting. I just want to note a couple of things. We've put together a photometric plan that shows zero light trespass across our property lines. All of our lights will be on timers that will be structured around our hours of operation. And then each pole will have shields on it. So those shields help direct it inward and away from property lines into the areas we need, lit up sidewalks, access points, parking. Architecturally, floor plan and building elevations were submitted. Again, 16,000 square foot building made of high-quality materials, hardy siding, brick wainscoting, sconce fixtures and window trim. We also included a gable roof design into the exterior elevations that center building had at about 22 feet. Lastly, you may have seen them. We also submitted a couple of renderings for some of our other schools. I believe we, we provided Dedham and Waymouth. Those are two examples currently under construction and are very similar to what this building would look like. Traffic, we hired Van Assen Associates to complete a full traffic assessment for this site. They completed that study according to MassDOT guidelines, and they studied three things. Assessment of existing conditions, projection and analysis of future conditions, and then they evaluated those findings and provided recommendations. Just to summarize what was in that report, they identified no apparent safety deficiencies related to motor vehicle crash history. They identified trip generation statistics, 137 vehicle trips in the morning, 131 in the evening peak hour. Site distances were found to exceed the minimums required from our access point. And the analysis indicated that the project will not result in significant impact to motors delays or vehicle queuing over existing or anticipated future conditions. to motors delays or vehicle queuing over existing or anticipated future conditions. So with that, I just want to highlight that our intent tonight is introduce ourselves, introduce our project, give you enough information to have a constructive conversation, discussion of the project, in hopes that we can take this back and develop something that, you know, everybody's comfortable with. So with that, I also have my consultants here, as I mentioned before, who can answer anything detailed design questions related.
How many vehicle trips did you say?
137 in the morning hour and 131 in the evening hour.
Because in this letter, it says 399 entering and plus 399 leaving.
Right. Scott Thornton with Van Assen Associates, that's a daily number?
Okay.
So over the course of the day that the business is in operation, you'd have about 399 trips entering and 399 exiting.
Okay.
So then the other numbers are just based on the peak hour conditions.
Oh, all right. Understood. Okay.
Just to backtrack a little, Meredith, could we have Tim do an overview of sort of the zoning context for a use like this, just for people who may not be familiar with site plan review?
Under the Dover Amendment.
Exactly.
Tim, would you be able to cover that, just sort of the explanation of why this is permissible?
Sure. So folks who are regular followers of the planning board may already be familiar, but if you're in the neighborhood and haven't been to one of these hearings, when we refer to the Dover Amendment, we're referring to Section 3 of Chapter 48, which is the zoning act of Mass general laws. And what Section 3 does is it identifies a series of, you know, what the state considers to be socially beneficial uses that towns are prohibited from creating zoning to prohibit. Daycare is one of them, educational uses, religious uses, agricultural uses. These are all Section 3, quote-unquote Dover Amendment uses. And what that basically means is, in a residential zone like this, business uses are prohibited. All sorts of other uses are prohibited. It's a exclusively residential zone. But if you propose a Dover Amendment-protected use, like a daycare, that is a use that we cannot prohibit. And so any parcel in a residential zone could be used for a daycare use. Now, that being said, the town via the planning board still has the ability to review and place reasonable conditions on the physical layout of any of these uses. You know, and that's where site plan review comes in. The town's Site Plan Review Bylaw covers two kind of basic types of projects. One is a multifamily project that's subject to site plan review. The other is any commercial project greater than 800 square feet, which this obviously would trigger site plan review. So that's the context of the hearing tonight. We are here to review the physical layout and the site plan of this proposal. That includes traffic and circulation, that includes the engineering and the grading, it includes the lighting, it includes landscaping, things like that. These are all elements of the project that the planning board has the ability to place reasonable conditions on. And so, you know, we received this application maybe a little more than a month ago. As Chris had mentioned, we had previously been involved in some pre-application conversations with other town departments, DPW, police and fire, engineering, to provide some feedback and give some direction about, you know, we've done a couple of these projects in recent years, and so we've got a little bit of experience with these, which Chris and his team were able to take back to the shop and put together their application. You know, we found the application to be generally complete in terms of, you know, required submissions. As usual, we kind of leave it to the board for all of the various kind of discretionary things that you may have questions or concerns about. But all of the materials that are required by the rules and regulations were provided. As Chris also alluded to, we are in the process of reviewing the stormwater plan and the traffic and circulation plan. That's work that's been done in conjunction with the town engineer. So once those peer reviews come in, we'll obviously provide them to the board. They'll be provided to the town engineer and to the DPW department, and they'll have some, hopefully some more detailed comments about those elements of the project.
Thank you, Tim.
Thank you. Questions at this point from the board? Before we start to go through, we'll need to go through, you know, architecture, and each night we'll have some different topics that we'll cover.
Yeah, so that was going to be my question is, you know, I have questions on multiple aspects of it. Do you want an overview of questions, or are we just going to go through, you know, the size of the building, size of impervious surfaces, then architecture? Are we taking it by topic, or are we just going to run through the whole?
Well, I think if there's materials that you would like to see in our next meeting, just that they can start preparing for when we go through this, I don't think we're going to be able to really get into heavy details on architecture or engineering, obviously, and, you know, some of the further detail. But if there are some things that right now you have questions on the level of impervious surface and cut-and-fill questions that it might be, because it is, and we always try to do our best to limit the cut-and-fill that's being done and brought in and off the site, things like that, because of the grade issues. There may be some questions that we can just help you by giving you those questions in advance.
Yeah, so in the context of additional information, I'm a bit concerned about the proximity of the building to the property on the south, to the south, and the proximity of the home there. So on your grading plan and your landscape plan, all your plans, I'd like for you to show the houses that are the immediate abutters. Because the houses are pretty close to the property line. So I'd like to understand the impact of the regrading, particularly retaining walls next to those properties, because what those homes may see, you know, when we look at a plan, is a lot different than we see it three-dimensionally. So for example, I didn't see top-of-wall elevations on any of the retaining walls. So I don't know how tall the retaining walls are. I'd like to see site sections, so we can see the heights of these walls and the site section running north to south, so we can see the existing home and in the context of the work that you're proposing, existing homes. And then a site section running east-west, which shows the significant contour change. But we'll see what you're proposing for retaining walls in both of those. And so if you could include the existing grade on those and the proposed grade and the cut-fill.
Sure.
And you say you're balancing the cut-fill, but we'd like to see the diagram and the calculations that show us that it is balanced. And I'd like to understand how many acres are being disturbed compared to how many acres are not being disturbed. The other thing is, when you show the homes on the adjacent property, I'd like to see existing trees on those property that are within 20 to 30 feet of the property line, because when you're doing significant cut-and-fill next to the trees on the neighbor's property, it could impact their trees, because their roots, you know, extend beyond the property line potentially. So we'd like to see the trees, the existing trees, include trees on the two abutting properties.
That's going to require them to allow me to do that.
If, I think you can seek permission, and if they don't want to grant the permission, then do your best from aerial view or what you can get from your property. The lighting plan, I noticed that the light poles are 18 feet.
Yeah.
We generally like that to be 10 or 12 feet. So you may likely need to revise your lighting plan based on that. I'd really, I guess, like some, maybe it will come in your discussion of your safety plan, but, or vehicle turnaround. But the proximity of that turnaround to the adjacent property, if that could be looked at and increased, and so that's not so close here to the adjacent property. And it has to do with, I think, maybe how you're rising up there. And so, you know, that gets me to like the total width. It seems crowded in width, and I wonder if you've looked at that footprint and if this is really the best footprint in terms of the length that way, the length this way, because of how it's pushing and pressuring on the abutting properties. I'd like to see some information about the fence. It's shown in the plan as solid vinyl, six feet tall around, in two layers. And I don't know the distance between those two layers. There's no dimension on that, I don't think. And the location of the dumpster, the trash, it seems it's close to the abutting property here. And I'm wondering if it couldn't be closer to the rear or move to the rear. And then I think one other thing in terms of a question I had was, the plans don't call for a material in the play area, but there's a detail that calls for artificial turf. So are you proposing 4,500 square feet of artificial turf?
Yes.
All right, so that's something I guess we're going to want to think about as well. All right, those are my sort of requests for additional information.
Sure.
And I'm sure I'll have further comments as we go.
So I have a question on when the traffic study was conducted and for how long?
So we did the counts out there in June, I think June 25th and June 26th. And June is a peak month, as far as counts indicate or DOT history indicates. So it's already at a peak level.
So DOT, that's through Mass DOT generally speaking throughout the state or on 138 in particular?
It's based on the group of, the group that covers the type of roadway that 138 is. It's a Group 3 urban arterials.
So in, here in Milton, at that point in time, school is out. And so Milton empties out for the summer. So I don't think that that probably is the best time to do a traffic study. I think the busiest time in Milton is now through Christmas. And I think, you know, perhaps another traffic study should be done during this time of the year, because it's just crazy busy. And also I do take a little bit of offense to where there's no projected impact. Unfortunately, a couple of years ago, my brother's best friend was killed on Blue Hill Ave. At the top of Robin Street, so it's a very dangerous, very, very dangerous street that I do think people forget. I think people think it is, just as you said, a Level 3, but it is still a very pretty street in Milton, sections of Blue Hill Ave. And I think people just write it off as like a Route 138. So I think we have to be cognizant of that fact. And it is a dangerous street, and I do think we need to relook at that and plan for the future there. I also was just wondering for additional data on our end, what are the sizes of Little Sprouts and Thatcher, Montessori, and the Goddard School? And is that the same square footage and roughly the same student count and student age? And is the 4,500 square foot playground, is that an industry an industry projection for the number of students?
Yes, so it's based somewhat on daycare licensing and what's required for the number of students or a number of classes that can be out there.
And so you said there's going to be 32 staff members and there's 57 parking spaces. Is that industry standard as well?
Yes, I actually went and looked at the previous schools, Little Sprouts and Goddard, and looked at their parking. I don't think we're too far off from them. I know they have provided parking studies as well. We have one we can provide you as well that shows all of that. I have also prepared, you know, we have 13 schools of similar size and similar settings, suburban versus urban, with about the same counts that are all, you know, between 45 and 55 parking spaces.
And also, who or where are your students are going to be coming from? Because as you know, that site, Blue Hill Ave, is on, you know, the outskirts of town. So I'm kind of wondering, who are you going to be marketing to?
Yeah, we typically, when evaluating a site for feasibility, look for population age 0 to 4 within a 3 to 5 mile radius of the site.
So most of your customers are 3, will be living 3 to 5. So usually, if you're in close proximity to a school, you kind of enjoy like a walkability factor of a school. So, you know, 138 Blue Hill Ave is really not a walkable neighborhood-type school, like the Goddard School, the Village School, Carriage House School on Canton Ave. They really do draw from the neighborhoods, and so they're able to walk and cut down on traffic. But I don't know if this site will actually do that. And lastly, because I'm not sure if you are aware, but Milton is going through, or has been going through, you know, looking at different sites for a new school. And that was a site that our school building committee looked at, and they did dismiss it for various reasons. And I think my understanding is it was too many landscaping issues and topography issues. So that's why they sort of crossed it off their list. So how come it made your list?
So from what I saw, I wish, a couple of documents were shared with me. Looked like originally they were trying to connect at both ends, Brush Hill and Blue Hill. So there was some ADA access concerns and slope concerns between the two. Given that we are trying to sort of stay with frontage on Blue Hill, it allows us a little bit more to work with access. We don't have to tie into two points. We can work off of one. So it helps a little bit there. That's the biggest point I can remember in the documents I had seen.
Okay. Jim, did you have any questions?
Just a quick question about access. It's a very fast road in the morning. And I was wondering if you would petition the state, a state road, to try to get some kind of a light or something to slow down traffic, more for your families dropping off? Because making that left when you're heading north on 138 is borderline dangerous. I don't know how you do that, but have you made any effort to reach out and try to slow traffic down at your entry point?
We have, I can tell you that in terms of needing some kind of light there, there's certain minimum volume levels that we would have to meet in order for them to consider any type of light there, and we would never get at that point. The site doesn't generate that much traffic. We do, it is a state road, as you said, we do have to go through the access permit process. At that time, we can see if the state is, would consider us installing, you know, maybe some speed radar feedback signs, something along those lines. But again, it's DOT's road, they're, you know, they may have concerns about what they want to show there for maintenance purposes.
Understood. I mean, almost anything you can do there would really help the town to slow traffic down on that corridor?
Yeah, we did do, it's posted for 35, and we did do some speed measurements there. Over the course of two days, I think, the average was right at 35, 35 to 36. And I think the next level up that we look at is the 85th percentile speed. And that's what, you know, 85% of the traffic is moving at or below that speed. And I think that was 38 or so. So it's not, it, you know, and there's always outliers, right? But the majority of the traffic is moving within a few miles per hour of the posted speed. But, but the majority of the traffic is moving within a few miles per hour of the, of the posted speed.
Surprising, but yeah.
Great. Well, thank you for this introduction. I think it might be nice just to hear from some of the neighbors who might be here. I know you had a meeting and we can hear from them and then set a date for continuation. And, and I can work with Tim on getting a schedule set. So you'll know which consultants will need which nights. And certainly they can come on Zoom if they can't be here in person. So thank you very much. So neighbors and yes, who would like to come speak? Please join us. That's all right. That's, we're glad, if you would like to come and you can pull up the microphone so we can hear you and if you could just state your name and address for the record.
Yes. My name is Ann Walsh and I live at 702 Blue Hill Avenue, which is directly across from this potential school.
Thank you.
I've lived there for 25 years and.
Could you move the microphone just a little?
Sure.
Yeah, just, thank you.
I've lived there for 25 years and have been very happy looking at all of the greenery across the street. I don't want that to change. I also work in Hyde Park. So twice a day, I'm traveling from my driveway onto Hyde Park Ave, going to Hyde Park. And traffic is 45 miles an hour, sometimes 50. They pass, the traffic is terrible. Sometimes it backs up all the way down the hill to my driveway. This has to be addressed because if it's not taken care of, there's going to be a huge problem. It's not just a matter of slowing traffic down because commuters use Blue Hill Ave to go through to their destinations, both in the morning and at night. And it's a problem. It's a problem now. And with their proposed 399 cars per day, that's impossible. I don't see how it can work. Okay? That's it.
All right, thank you.
Hey there, welcome.
Hi. My name is Farley Sullivan. I live at 711 Blue Hill Avenue. I'm further to the south. So I appreciated the 95 page drainage report, which I've not committed to memory, but what did go through thoroughly. Much of it way above my pay grade. But I am hoping that there are experts that can look at it beyond what they have presented. Because the slope combined with the removal of so many trees, combined with 58,000 square feet of impervious surface is going to impact stormwater runoff. And that runoff is going to go onto Blue Hill Avenue and then into the Wet Meadow, which is a wetland. And this is something of great concern to me. I'm very concerned about the environment. But that, that is going to impact the neighborhood via flooding. Also, you know, habitat loss, that sort of thing. I would like to show some photographs that my neighbor took. Ken and Doug Fitzgerald, who can't be here tonight, they're away. But they took these photographs in March of 2010. There was 18 inches of rain in that month. And their driveway, which is, is south of the Wet Meadow, became a lake. And all of the neighbors that share that driveway were unable to get out of their houses for several days. This is something that I see, I've only lived there for five years, but I've seen it flood up to the level of the driveway. I actually was able to even go ice skating there this year. I mean, it's, becomes an actual pond.
This is taken from 138?
Uh, that is, yeah, that's.
Standing on 138?
Yeah.
Okay.
The road with, their driveway was severely damaged and, and cost quite a bit of money to repair. But this is something that is going to happen. I mean, flooding and, and major storms. I mean, look at the hurricane that's coming up. There's expected like 30 inches of rain in, in parts of Appalachia. I mean, this is going to happen. And you can prepare for a hundred year storm because hundred year storms are, it, it's different now. I mean, you say it's a hundred year storm, but things change. Things are changing. And we need to really evaluate because this, this is greatly going to impact the neighborhood. Also concerned about how the land is cleared. And what if a big storm happens while the land is being cleared? Is that going to cause landslides, which have happened in the town of Milton? There was November 2018 at 333 Brush Hill where abutters homes were damaged because of landslide. So this is something that I think really needs to be reviewed beyond just taking the engineer's report word for it. So that is something I'm greatly concerned about. And also the, in the traffic situation, which I'm glad you guys are going to review. But I do find the June 26th to 27th review right before the Fourth of July week. I mean, it's, it seems like a, not the best time to review traffic. We'd also, I'd like, I don't know if you were to come up to read Deb and Ken Fitzgerald's letter, which I do believe the board received, but just so everybody can, can hear. We have concerns about the property that is behind the developed, the Gardner School. What, what is going to happen? This is 6.87 acres. They are only developing three-ish acres. That's a lot of land that could be developed down the road, which is going to, again, greatly impact the neighbors and the feel of the neighborhood and once again, the environment.
Great. Thank you, Farley.
Hi.
Hi there, welcome.
My name is Andrea Geilingmore. I live at 739 Blue Hill Ave. So behind the property that we're talking about. I'm reading this letter from my neighbors who live up the hill at 705 Blue Hill Ave. Ken and Deborah Fitzgerald. We've resided at 705 Blue Hill Ave for 40 years and we're concerned that our peaceful property will be forever changed with the threat of what we consider to be a commercial build out. However, we're not the chain ourselves to a tree kind of people to stop the inevitable. That being said, we do have some serious concerns. While it appears that care has been taken by the architects and engineers to minimize the chance of flooding to adjacent properties, those same architects and engineers absolve themselves of any responsibility for unforeseen conditions or any deviation of the plan. Typically, construction companies are awarded contracts based upon the lowest bid, who then is responsible for overseeing the implementation of the plan to ensure the intended results are met? Furthermore, if our shared driveway does flood, what recourse is available to us? Would the planning board suggest a bond be required of the owners of the Gardner School in the event of a major flooding? And then at a previous meeting held at the library, an abutter asked if any additional development is planned for the remaining portion of the three plus acres of land beyond the Gardner School build out. Chris Fazanen's response was no. A participant at the meeting then asked if the potential new owners would consider implementing a conservation easement to assure no further building on the remaining land beyond the Gardner School. And Chris, along with others representing the project, replied yes to that possibility. What are the steps to make this happen? And how will it need to be structured in order to ensure no further development? Thank you for your review of our concerns, sincerely, Deborah and Ken Fitzgerald.
Thank them, yes. Thank you for reading it.
That's good.
Yes, great. Anyone else like to speak to this? And then we'll go to anyone online, Zoom.
Thank you, Tim Kernan, 642 Brush Hill Road. I made copies for everybody. It's easier for me to.
Thank you.
Easier for me to read than it is to ad lib. I wanted to approach the architectural and curb appeal concerns that whose neighbors have from the premise that this lot is located in a residential area and therefore should strive to appear residential. Complement the historical character of Milton and not adopt a commercial perspective presented in the current plan. I would encourage the school to visit some of the following, which they can, from which they can lift ideas. Suffolk Resolves on Canton Ave, various locations on Brush Hill Road, including the stone walls and the MDC police station. I'm sure there's other historical sites that are, that are appropriate to go visit and pick ideas off of. Specific recommendations that I have include, one, eliminate the stonework at the base of the front pillars and on either side of the entry. Use a more historic window design and create more uniform symmetry on the front facade, blending the doors and windows into a more aesthetic appeal. Use clabbered or clabbered-like materials across the front of the building, eliminating the two different textures that are in the current design. Redesign the roof, eliminating the three peaks. Potentially create a long roof across the whole building. Excuse me, potentially creating a longer roof with dormers across the top. The front of the building, as Cheryl pointed out earlier, is very long and presents too much of a mass when viewed from the street. Either narrow the building or set back some of the sides to the front and landscape them to reduce their appearance. Use the natural stone for the, your retaining walls and construct a stone wall along 138 that matches the design of other stone walls along 138 as well. I'd also like to address a question relative to change of use to a property granted rights under the Dover Amendment. With this project, Milton will have 19, I believe there's 18 now. And I think this would be the 19th daycare facility in the town. With a declining population, some of these were closed. Should this facility close, what usage restrictions apply to the conveyed property? The project is seeking approval under state law, which grants the developer certain exemptions from local bylaws based upon his using the property for educational daycare purposes. Under this scenario, should the proponent disengage from this line of business under which the exemptions were granted? Or should the proponent sell the property? What restrictions apply? Does this then become a non-conforming property and therefore open to any alternative use? Or is it solely reserved for daycare in perpetuity? Thank you.
Thank you. That's great. Tim, do you want to just touch on that? Just to, while we're just on that subject, to answer that question?
Yeah, so if, if the Gardner School goes out of business and, and has to sell the property or sell the building, another Dover Amendment use could move in, another daycare, a nonprofit educational use, a religious use, farm use. But in terms of, you know, a, a, another commercial use coming in, it's, it would not be allowed. You know, the, the way to think about the Dover Amendment is not that you're creating a commercial use that happens to be a daycare. It's that it just effectively kind of adds daycare as an allowed use into all of your residential zones. It doesn't add other commercial uses. And so, you know, the building could be, again, repurposed for another, another daycare use, another Dover Amendment use. It, it would not be able to be used for another commercial use unless the zoning changes, unless there's a relief from the Board of Appeals. But that would be true of, of any parcel in town.
Great, thank you, Tim.
And as a follow-up, Tim, do you know what the property taxes will be? I mean, are they considered tax exempt? What would be the public benefit to the town?
Chris, you're not a nonprofit, correct?
No.
Yeah, so that's, it'll, it'll be, it'll be, I, I don't know exactly what the assessment kind of process looks like, but it's, it's certainly a taxable use. And it is, it would be considered a commercial use. We can get you the, the assessed values on Little Sprouts and, and the Goddard School, which I think are the two kind of largest and, and most comparable. But there, there would be, you know, a, a tax, you know, benefit, for lack of a better term.
Okay, anyone else from the public who would like to? Yes, Tabor?
Evening. Tabor Keely, I'm with 674 Brush Hill Road. I am a director of butter, though not on Blue Hill Ave. And I first want to start off by thanking the Gardner School folks for inviting the neighbors to a meeting a month ago to get us a little oriented. You know, we, we were able to get a few pieces of information that we wouldn't have gotten otherwise just from a set of plans. So I appreciate the, the outreach. Just as, and a few of these things have already been mentioned, but as a point of fact, that the neighbors of 582 Blue Hill Ave, this was the 40B, discovered some significant discrepancies in that application's hydrology and wetlands reporting. And it was peer reviewed and the neighbors went out and hired a Scott Horsley to do a third review. And the peer review admitted, oh yes, well, you're right. And so my question is, I mean, who will be doing the peer review? Is it somebody that you select? And is it something that you have any control over? Because, you know, I'd hate to have this flooding issue. I mean, this is not an unusual item. It wasn't just 2010. It does happen regularly, it's once a winter, maybe not to that extent. But this is something that's already happening. So I can't imagine that this is going to get any better unless something significant is done. So I just want to make sure that everybody's well aware of that and it's not just one neighbor complaining about it. Getting on the drainage, will the drainage basin proposed for the front of the building require a fence if it's deep and it's full of water? My assumption is if you've got kids in the school, it will. If so, can we ask for something attractive? I'd like to think that what the Mass DOT did next to the Montessori School up at Brush Hill Road in Blue Hill Ave is something that's a good example of what not to do. It's one of the biggest eyesores on, on the highway. Or is there any way to sink the drainage basin below the grade and out of sight? I, I know there is a way. It's not inexpensive, but it's one of those things that would make a big difference and it would certainly be a, alleviate a safety issue. The board recently reviewed the Little Sprouts daycare, recently, maybe two years ago, at 919 Blue Hill Ave. And a major concern of yours at the time was the safe vehicle access to and from the site. 919 Blue Hill Ave has the advantage of a light at the fire station. This does not. The proposed site at the bottom of the hill where speeds are generally well in excess of 35 miles an hour. I'm not so sure how we can get the median. It must have been a bicycle or something that was, you were tracking. That it's, it's, it's definitely a fast road. If you've got 399 cars per day exiting the property and you say 46% of them are going north, that's 200 cars almost taking a left against traffic. That's, it's just, it's extremely dangerous situation. And I'm not so sure that the June 26th and 27th one day sample is adequate. I should note that it was pointed out to me earlier this evening that the Delphi Academy that's at the top of the hill hires a rent-a-cop every day for traffic in and out because that's how bad it is for them. I don't know if between here and the top of the hill, it's going to be any different, but just something, you know, you guys ought to be aware of that in the neighborhood, that's how somebody else is taking care of it. I don't believe it's something that the town required. I think it's something that their insurance company and attorneys require because this is a dangerous spot. Just a, something you ought to know. It is a commercial use in a residential neighborhood. And we, even though it's permitted by right, the current proposed design that you have, at least the elevation that we have, it's, really looks like a commercial office building or a retail building. It's not particularly attractive to a residential neighborhood. And as Tim was saying, clapboard, shingle, something to soften that would make a big difference. Not having that long facade, but break it up with some kind of a bump out. A lot of other things that could be done. It's a 20-foot high building, you know, five years old, they can't be that tall. I'm just thinking that 10-foot high would be adequate. So the building could be 12 or 14. I, I'm just, I'm, I'm not an architect, I'm not a builder, but it, it just seems that 20- 20 feet is a lot of building and that's a lot of, are you hiding all the HVAC in the building so there's nothing exposed? If it's a rooftop unit, that's 20 feet plus the four feet, you know? And that's, so I'm just throwing that out there. Whatever you can do to lower the height, it's going to help from any, all the butters that are directly next to it and that's, that's a big issue. The applicant reports that this school will not be operated at night or weekends. The parking for this site is entirely behind the building and we did discuss it at our last meeting, but the empty parking lot is an attractive nuisance at night or weekends and we think it ought to be fenced or gated. Obviously, that's, that's, I guess their choice, but it's something that really ought to be considered. Also, the lighting plan, you're not operating much in the dark, so the lighting plan really ought to be minimal, you know, 4:30 in the afternoon till maybe 6:30 or 7:30 at night, whenever the last employee leaves. I know we were talking about a timer. Do we have a time for that timer? Is it 11 o'clock at night or can it be at 6:30 or 7? Because that's when people are up and around and that's when the lights are shining and it's, it's obtrusive and it's, would be a really nice thing to do as a neighbor. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. That's great, yeah, thank you. We'll enter that into the record. Okay, anyone else from the public who would like to speak on this? And Tim, are you seeing anyone with their hands up on Zoom?
I am not. If there's anyone on the Zoom that wants to participate in this hearing, you can use the raise hand function at the bottom of your Zoom screen. I am, I am not seeing anyone.
Right.
Can I ask another question? Can I ask another question? Somebody brought up that we have 19 daycares in town and with the birth rate declining in the Northeast and the possibility that Milton Public Schools is looking to do a early preschool. You know, right now, we don't offer a free preschool, but there is a plan to offer it one in one time. Have you taken that into consideration in your long-term business plan?
Yes, yeah, great, thank you.
Yes, so all of that is considered. It's, it's not uncommon for us to enter a new market and hear about how many schools are in an area. Everything, every business, every type of daycare is run differently with different advantages, disadvantages, families prefer this over this, location is obviously a big part of it. So there's that aspect that plays a role in this. So, you know, the, the age of a school, things of that nature all, all play a part. It's not the first time that this has been brought up, the decline in population. Again, we've looked at the numbers, we've evaluated where things are at. We've looked at schools like Little Sprouts and Goddard and evaluated their enrollment utilization, understanding where they're at, what's in the neighborhood, you know, three to five mile radius. We believe that long-term, there's an opportunity and a need.
Yeah, because we would hate to, you know, deforest a site for a short-term gain.
I feel it. The last thing I want to do is deforest, build a building, enroll, do all this and, and not be successful long-term. Right, that's, that's part of our evaluation in, in bringing this to you.
And your Wood Road one, I think that's under construction now.
Yeah.
How many square feet is that?
That one is slightly larger because it was an existing retrofit. I think it's about 20,000 square feet. Yeah. I believe it's like 217 kids.
And then you said Dedham and Waymouth you have?
Yeah, Dedham, Cambridge was a mixed-use, so that was a smaller school in, in a mixed-use area and then Dedham and Waymouth are similar-sized schools to this one in a similar.
How far along are they under construction? They've broken ground?
Dedham is probably two or three months from, from, you know, close to completion and then Waymouth is a few months behind that.
Okay, all right. And it would, just following up on some of the residents, I think it would be really nice if you could sort of soften the building and make it look a little bit more residential. I think that would go a long way with just the sense of what would be.
Yeah, as I mentioned, we had the list.
Getting in with the town, yeah.
That was one we had on our list and I think at the meet, at the neighborhood meeting, we didn't necessarily get feedback on specifics of what they were looking for. So I heard some of that tonight that we can take back.
Yeah, and we can help.
And I understand the Dover Amendment, I own a business that, you know, aspects are covered under the Dover Amendment. So I'm here in Milton and I'm in a residential neighborhood and I know what I have had to do to fit within my neighborhood. I know the setbacks that I have, I know the quality of the materials that I have had to do and install. So I really do think you need to take particular attention. Yes, as an applicant, it is frustrating sometimes to hear that you should be doing things that maybe you might not feel the need to do, but I think long-term, it would serve you better if you really looked at natural stone. We don't, you know, like prefab stone. We take great pride in the history of our town and we want any new business to sort of keep that in mind. So, you know, vinyl, I'm not a fan of. So, you know, if plant it like you would be designing your own house. I own a landscaping garden center nursery, so I want big trees. I don't want eight, eight-foot trees. Up that whole area up there is, is a lot of deer. So don't throw in a bunch of arborvitae. Even green giant arborvitae get eaten up for the top, I mean, the bottom six feet. Make sure the plants are native and make sure they're all big. I'd rather see bigger trees and fewer of them.
Okay. Well, we'll do our best to plant to screen so that the neighbors are comfortable, but avoid some of those.
Question, to the point about the peer review. Tim, you mentioned that peer review is underway. Who has been engaged for peer review on the stormwater?
Chris can correct me from my, I, I think we're working with, with Horsley Witten on the stormwater review. And Chris, who do we have on the traffic review? Is Beta working with us on that one?
Beta, yes.
Yeah. And, and that was, that, those, those, those firms were, were chosen in consultation with, with the town engineer and DPW?
Yeah, they were recommended to us. I would have happily used whoever, whoever you asked. Unfortunately, I do think we signed a contract with Horsley Witten as of, you know, earlier this week.
They certainly have the qualifications to do it, both firms. Beta is under contract with our DPW and is very familiar with Milton. So I think it was Tabor that asked about the peer review on the stormwater in particular? Yeah. Yeah, so when we, when we get to the stormwater portion, I think it, it's a good point. Milton seems to have soil conditions such that, and the water table such as it's very high. And so if you're planning on infiltration into an area which already has a very high water table, there's questions about how well that works, right? So I know you have professional engineers, Buller does this kind of work, so, but it's a concern that's been raised. It's peer reviewed before, there's been a lot of questions. So I think making sure that there's plenty of opportunity for a back and forth with the, with the peer reviewer and, and the board and so that the community hears all of the considerations, I think will be really important.
Great, all right. So, yes, please George, yes, please come join us, thanks.
Hi, my name is Tom Palmer. I'm a member of the Conservation Commission. A year and a half ago, I walked the property because there was some discussion about a conservation purchase. So I'm familiar with it and I also looked at the recent plans that were distributed. I just have a question, I think maybe the proponents can answer it. There were three borings done in the area where the work is proposed. I think the one that was highest up the slope revealed a seven feet of fill that sat upon existing topsoil. But what I remember from walking it is that area is the grove of big pines that are very large, over 50 years old, I'd say most of them. So the fill presumably was placed there before those trees grew up. And it's very mysterious to me why in a prior use, in an area where nothing has ever been built, as far as I can tell, that seven feet of fill was spread on a fairly steep slope. It's just mysterious to me. I wonder if the proponents have any clues as to why that might be?
You want to answer? Yeah, if you want to, yeah.
So unfortunately, we don't have the geotech engineer here, but I'll give you my best. We did discuss this, it was identified that there was, will look to be fill on a site that had never been developed. They sort of took it away as, as just a like kind material, kind of a, an interesting condition. Overall, at the end of the day, we will be removing and reworking a lot of the soil within the foundations and even extending into pavement and retainable areas. So it wasn't a main point of discussion after kind of realizing that would be reworked.
So speaking of the trees, I saw the tree report and like a very, a long list of trees that would be removed, I believe, or was that just a list of trees that exist?
Yeah, so there was a list, I believe the list was just all 517 trees that were identified by size, type, condition, all of that.
So it would be helpful to know how many of those are being removed?
Yeah.
And how, what's the total caliper being removed? You know, some communities now are requiring replacement, just, not just in conservation, just because of tree canopy concerns. So it would be important to understand how, what the caliper removed is. Obviously, you're putting in impervious area, so it won't be one-to-one, but we'd, would be also helpful to know what the caliper total is of what you're putting in.
Yes, I will overlay it with the plan, get a better idea of quantity, size, and then I can tell you that I, I believe we're planting 100 to 150 trees and shrubs.
But you're removing about 400?
Yes.
So you're removing about 400. So I know it's not conservation land, but Cheryl's points, Conservation Commission, I believe, have a three-to-one replacement. So for every tree they remove, you have to plant three and if your site does not have the space for those three trees for the replacement, then you can, you know, put it to a tree fund so then we can use it in other parts of town. I sit on our Climate Action Committee here in town and our recent greenhouse gas analysis is we've increased over the past couple of years. And so we're trying to mitigate that and the best mitigation is preservation. We want to preserve so we don't have to mitigate. So I think you should really look at a robust tree replacement, not shrubs so much. It's, it's a lot of tree canopy over the last.
Sure, we often, I've seen it a few times now in, in different jurisdictions that, you know, two-to-one tree or three or four-to-one shrub.
Yeah.
Just because, like you said, we only, you know, you need more space to plant trees.
It's just the, the shrubs don't really provide the canopy, right?
Yeah.
For the greenhouse gas that, and even in that you're, can you go to the parking lot plan? I mean, I don't think you have trees, you have trees in your parking lot plan?
Just a couple, I think there were a couple islands, but.
Yeah, there's, I think there's only two parking lot islands. They probably have short, small trees on the outside with light poles in the middle.
And that's one of the trade-offs of trying to keep it smaller, but if you look at like Milton Public Library, which has a row of trees down the middle and around the perimeter, it, it has a lot less effect of looking like a big field of asphalt. It has, you know, you see the tree. So you could take a look at, at that because neighbors, again, you know, are going to be looking at. I mean, we see it with the Goddard School with a big parking lot in front and thankfully, you know, this is in, in the rear, but it also puts it close to the two buddy neighbors' homes.
Sure.
So you want to, and, and I know you're addressing that with landscape, but when we looked at some other applications, we've asked for an enlarged landscaping plan in areas of high concern to us, like we're as close to a butter, so we may, I think, may ask you for those too. So if that, if you're keeping track of the things that we'd like to see.
Yeah.
Yeah, that would be another thing.
I'll certainly watch this back.
And that, and that goes back to, do you really need that, those, that number of parking spaces? So if you're able to lose some of the parking spaces and then create more islands to break, break it up.
So that's, that's just a touchy subject. You know, you can go both ways with, and I'm, I understand it, right? A lot of times, we're on the other end of this asking for more parking, but it disturbs more green space, creates more runoff, does all that. So there's a happy medium where we kind of get all that to, to work together.
Okay, anyone else? If not, I think we can continue this, have a motion to continue the public hearing to 710.
Real quick, can we just, you know, the, the, those peer reviews are, are in progress?
Right.
So engineering, traffic, we may not be able to have as informed a conversation, but maybe, I, I don't know, like what the board's thoughts are in terms of kind of a thematic meeting. I don't know if we can talk, you know, architecture and landscape design, you know, and sort of maybe commit to that for the next hearing so that we can get consultants lined up and people can have a good expectation of what we're going to be talking about?
So one thing I would say is I mentioned the, how it felt crowded to me across the property and so, you know, I consider that sort of a site planning, design, a big picture design question. Others have talked about the footprint being a box or a rectangle and architecturally how that should break up. So I think if you would take a look at those two things together, you know?
How it would sit on the site and how it would look from Blue Hill Ave when you're driving by, is it just going to look like a big, you know?
Sure.
Wall.
And that's, I heard some renderings from different angles might help from neighbors, what their view would be.
And the site sections are important to me to end the cut and fill. So I think if you address those for our next meeting and think, and in, and even the lighting, you know, the 18-foot versus 10 or 12-foot pole. Information about the timer or controls. You know, those are things I think that we don't need the peer review for.
And that's what I would ask too, is I think there was plenty mentioned by neighbors. We've discussed that I can come back with information and, and updates on it.
And if it doesn't give you enough time, we can always continue it, but if we want to set it for the 10th and then, if that gives you enough time.
Yeah, I would expect that we probably need the four weeks, but.
Yeah.
And have you entertained it, gate it all? That's actually a good idea.
Yeah, it's a, it's a consideration and something we would probably implement.
So would you prefer that we continue to the 24th? Would that give you just a?
Yes, let's do that.
Let's do that, that's great, that's, works.
Okay, so then I will make a motion to continue the public hearing for Zero Blue Hill Ave, parcel B-7-5, site plan approval, the Gardner School, to October 24th at 7:05.
Second?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all, thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Okay, so now we can, oh, yeah, the photographs, I don't know if those are being left here or?
Did you want to include those in the record?
Did you want to?
Well, maybe you can scan them and send them.
Yeah.
Yeah, I can email them.
Okay. Yeah, and you can send them to Tim? Yeah, that would be great to add it to the record. Thank you for coming. Okay, so we'll give them a moment to move out. All right, so we can now move to reopening the public hearing for 10 Bassett Street. Site plan approval amendment continued from September 16th. We can welcome the team to come join us here. Just give it a minute for them to clear out. Yeah, welcome, come.
Good evening.
Good evening. All right. Okay, great. So tonight, I thought we could just go through the new submitted materials that have come in subsequently from the last. Tim, I don't know if you were able to share screens on some of these as they, and sort of walk through the new submissions and let you describe what you've submitted.
Go ahead and pull those up, I just need a minute to get.
Thanks, please. Sorry.
There's a lot of echo in the hallway, isn't there?
This is all materials.
This is all materials.
Seems very emigable though, which is nice.
So there were a few items just that we want to share and walk through with the public. To know, some of the things that we've asked for have come in and some still are yet to come in, so. So if you would like.
Be the first one that you'd like to see.
Okay, where would you like to begin with what you've submitted?
If, if I could just interject on, on one thing, I was asked at the last hearing, this is Michael Modestino representing the owner. And I was asked to make an amendment to the application on the issue of the square footage on the, on the outdoor area and the indoor area. So I, I have that. We, we had the count wrong. There's going to be 48 seats outside the closed area and then 51 inside. So there's a slight change on that.
Okay.
Can I file that with you?
Yes.
I, I gave Tim a copy.
Tim, you gave Tim a copy, then that's sufficient. And we'll give Julia, just so she has one too. That's great. Great, thanks.
So we submitted the vendor list for 10 Bassett LLC. We've listed all the businesses that they're going to conduct business with. That was one of the items.
Do you want to go to the vendor list?
Well, that one up as well.
Okay.
Okay, it should be coming up.
Great, thank you.
So, so are any of these vendors that are new, that are not currently vendors for the food center?
There's only one, it's just Lennox, which is a, what do they do, Vince? They service the, your equipment. But, but other than that, we use all the same vendors that are on this list.
So the thinking is when Martin Eddie makes a delivery, it'll still be once a week, just a larger delivery?
Exactly what it happens. So all the deliveries that we get, they're, they're the same truck. So there'll be no increased delivery traffic to, to the food center because we'll be delivering to two places in one stop.
I guess the question is you may have the same vendors, but you might not have the same frequency of deliveries. Meaning a, a restaurant who's open seven days a week is likely to, or could very well possibly have a different schedule of when his deliveries. I think Cheryl had been the one to ask, could we have a delivery schedule from your current delivery dates? And I'd like to have Vance's delivery date to see on days, on specific vendors.
These particular ones.
All of them.
All the delivered vendors.
All of your, all of your vendors.
Where there's crossover, I'd say between the two, where there's going to be shared vendors, right? Because we, we don't necessarily need all of the food center's vendors, do we?
Not, only the ones that cross over, correct.
Essentially this list.
Okay.
Essentially on this list.
So then we could just need the times.
What days do they come to you currently? What days do they come to you? Is it a regular schedule that they come?
Yeah, and actually those trucks go from us right to him down the street.
Okay.
As it is, as it stands now, so.
All right, I would like to see his, I would like to see those, just those dates.
So it could be, that's an interesting point though, too, is there, can there be some consolidation with his operations in terms of delivery so that the neighbors who are experiencing lots of trucks on side streets, if they're making a deliver, a truck is coming in to your parking lot, can they deliver then to the other two restaurants from that parking lot?
From the food center parking lot? It may be a challenge to do that. They are pretty far away. At least, I'd have to two wheel them, I guess, to the, to the restaurants. I'm not sure how that would work.
You know, you know, I think in other applications, I've talked about how in historic cities around the world, they figure out a way to do deliveries and that, and disposal that, that kind of works. They don't need to bring, they don't bring in huge trucks into, you know, historic, and they have lots of businesses and restaurants and cafes that are running. So I guess, you know, it's, it would be something if you could explore that, whether it could happen, so like.
So we're saying they deliver to the food center, the marketplace, and then they would.
I just don't know, i- is it a possibility and whether, I don't know if that would be an improvement or not. But I'm wondering if it would cut down on truck traffic if they could do consolidated delivery to the other restaurants. And I don't know what these look like, is it's too much that they can't manage, you know, to get it over to Abbey Park, for example, up the alley. But what I'm suggesting is, you know, maybe it can be so that you don't have to have that truck then leave your parking lot and go to Abbey Park and Navarro, right?
Certainly worth looking at.
Very physical for the driver, though. It's a lot of work for the guy.
So if I'm going to have their pallet drops, so unless they could drive a pallet jack up the street, I, I, I don't, I don't know, actually. It's never something I've considered, so it's something we could look at.
Yeah, you know, anything that could, you know, reduce impact. So maybe they bring, you know, a smaller truck at the same time. They offload everything bigger and then they take the small truck over. I don't know if it's possible. I'm just making something up that I think could be beneficial to neighbors if it could work.
Like, I guess I just want to see, like, what days right now Abbey Park and Navarro are receiving those. I don't know if those delivery dates are the same. Do they deliver those vendors? Do they deliver at the same time to Abbey Park and Navarro for you? The same day? So you have the, that daily schedule that you can provide to us?
If you think about it, they're going to pull into the food center. Where do they go to get to Navarro and Abbey Park? I mean, we should see how the truck route would work.
And what days? Because I, I do, I, I, I think it's ideal in an ideal world that they deliver only on those days, but I'm not, I'd like to see that that is how it actually is.
That you're sharing this truck and minimizing that way is inspiring me to think that maybe you can share otherwise with your other establishments so that you're consolidating the deliveries, your trucks are moving around less and it makes less impact on the neighbors. That would be a wonderful thing if it worked.
And I, I did have a question. I know you said you're not doing linen tablecloths the way you do at the other locations, but you're doing linen napkins, correct?
Yes.
So where are those and how are those being cleaned and dry cleaned?
We're going to use the same linen service that the food center uses. We have a linen service for ourselves.
Was that on this list?
UniFirst?
UniFirst.
The last one?
UniFirst, that's the linen company. Because I thought I've seen another linen truck, but.
Sorry, Mary.
No, that's all right.
I just wanted to say if they maybe could put a list, you know, what, you know, obviously it doesn't have to be extensive, but generally what kinds of things are being delivered with these, these bullet pointed suppliers.
Food vendor, you mean?
Yes.
So I'm kind of a little sympathetic to the applicant on this. Because I, I think it's going to be challenging. So even in like my business, we've got two divisions and we order from the same vendor. And I ask them to come on the same day and they don't always. And this is just talking to my brother. So I can only imagine how difficult it is going to be talking to other people. I, I, you know, I think it's, it's good that we can try to do that. And, and, you know, in Navarro's special permit, they do talk about small truck vendors. And I've said this before, trucks are just getting bigger and we could request small trucks. But reality is it's not going to happen. You know, my husband worked in a trucking company. He has a CDO license. The average age of a trucker is like 58 years old. There's not younger truckers coming around. They're, the trucks are getting larger. They're making more multiple stops. So I think it's this, just from running a business, I think this is going to be hard to manage. But I think some of the other things that, you know.
Can I just, before you get off of that topic? I mean, I think about like the North End, you know, they have narrow streets, lots of street, busy, you know, the parking. And yeah, they have how many restaurants and some, and they manage without having big trucks come in and blocking everything off. I, I don't know how they all manage or if they coordinate with one another. But what I'm suggesting is in other locations, they've figured out ways to get impacts or get their deliveries to work without having, shutting down everything around them. And so it's, it may be, it may not be possible, but it seems to me it should, it should be explored anyway.
You know, I would rather look at and try to enforce the, the conditions of the, you know, of the special permits already. So one of the conditions of Navarro is, is that the applicant shall require large truck vendors to park in designated loading zones on Adam Street, and they don't do that. So I go into the square and every Friday night to pick up, pick up, take out. And it's, they're, the, it's not on Adam Street. There, it's on, church.
Or no, Franklin.
Franklin. It's on Franklin. And even though those planter boxes are there and it says no parking, you see the big truck there, so.
And they park on the sidewalk.
Yeah, so I, I think it would be easier to enforce that condition than trying to navigate some other conditions. And I, and I think the hours of operation is the, the best place to start. And, you know, going back, it was in, thanks for Tim, he did pull together the, the, the special permits for, you know, Milton Marketplace since 1982. And, you know, I enjoyed reading the history. And, and you could see all of the, the, the changes. And, and it should be, a business does evolve. And you need some considerations sometimes. And one of the things I noticed, and I, I can't remember which it was, but I thought it was interesting that they had the hours of Milton Marketplace, you know, from nine to nine, and then they had employee hours from eight to 10. And I thought that was really interesting because obviously if you open business at nine, your employees are not coming in at nine. So it's a reasonable expectation that your employees are going to be coming in earlier. And at the end of the day, it's a reasonable expectation. Your employees are going to be leaving an hour later. And I think if you let the neighbors know what those expectations are, I think it's helpful. You know, the neighbors have come and said they are comfortable with, you know, a nine, a nine o'clock, you know, end time. And if you look at the restaurants in the commercial districts, they all close around 10. And again, I don't know when their last employee leaves, but no, you know, Steel and Rye is 10. I think Mr. Chan's is 10:30. This is just according to the websites. Abbey Park is 10, 10. So I, I think we, we should focus on hours of operations. I think we should focus on the number of seats and the number of bathrooms. Things that we can sort of monitor and, and not overly regulate the, the ins and outs of a business every single day. You know, I was there at the food center on Monday and yep, I stood there and saw the big trucks come in. And I was talking with somebody and we said, yep, here's the big trucks coming in, but they're no bigger than the trucks that come to my business. And even in the parking lot, I'm standing there and you just step out of the way. So as long as those trucks are coming in during the allowed hours, I think it's going to be hard to, to monitor, like the size of the trucks.
I don't think we can. And I think that's why we're just asking not even the hours, because I, I think, Michael, you've done a wonderful job with the hours of delivery, the window timeframe. I know you close your gates so they can't get back into the back part. I know sometimes they do arrive early and they idle in the parking lot, which would be helpful if they could turn off their engines when they're waiting to get in to eight o'clock delivery times. But it's more of how, how many days a week are these trucks coming? Just so we, again, can have a realistic idea of the impact to, to the neighbors and the butters. So that would be just helpful. You don't have to give it tonight, so. But we would like to see it at some point as, as Cheryl had requested. Let's move to the next item that.
The next item is the menu?
Which look great, by the way. And these are all online, Tim, correct, for, if people want to see?
Yeah, these are up on the, on the, on the town website. I had, I had stepped away for a minute when you guys put this up, but let me see if I can take control here. Which document, which document are we looking for?
What are your delivery hours?
The next was the, oh, menu that we were going to just, that they had submitted, just. So the public knows that that is available to see?
There it is.
Here we go.
Okay, great. Any questions from the board on this?
So is this menu for lunch and dinner and Sunday?
That's the opening menu that we put together so far.
And that's available what hours, that menu?
That would be from lunch through dinner.
So that would be, so 10 o'clock on the weekend days, I think it was, and nine o'clock on?
Yeah, I mean, I think we wanted to run typical restaurant hours that everybody else runs in town.
So if someone, so that they're, as I understand the hours, you want it to be open until midnight, but there's a certain hour at which?
No, I mean, I, I think that's probably the misconception is that, you know, most of the restaurants in town run their kitchens until nine or 10 o'clock, depending upon the day of the week. You know, for example, the last person left Navarro last night at 10 o'clock and it was over. And that's typical of a weeknight. Weekend nights, sometimes we might see a few people after nine o'clock, but it's not a, it's not a big crowd. And that's just to allow people to, you know, somebody that might want to dine a little bit later on the weekend.
So if somebody came in on the weekend at, let's say, 9:45, could they order from this menu?
It's, that's pushing it, you know, and that will kind of depend on, you know, that could be adjusted backwards. We've done that before, you know, just because business doesn't warrant it, you know. It's, it's, it's a little different in the square than it would be in the marketplace. It's, you know, there's, there's, you know, there's a lot of foot traffic in the square. There's a lot of other restaurants in the square, a lot of other activity going on where people might, you know, drive by or walk in. This is more isolated. So we don't really intend this to be a, a late night operation. It's never been the intention.
Because there's been a lot of people who've raised concerns about the number of bar seats and sort of the bar aspect of it. So I'm trying to understand with the menu and the questions I'm asking, how, how much of a restaurant versus a bar is it? Some of that has to do with the availability of this menu for the hours of how much it's open. And then how much is it open beyond when food's available?
It's not open after the, after the, after the rest, after the kitchen closes, we don't invite people in to just drink. That's not how we, how we operate.
So if, if somebody came in at 10, they, they're not served? Or at 10:15 on a weekend, they're not?
They can't get a drink?
They can, but the, the, you know, the, they can get a drink, but they can't get more than two. That's the, that's in the, that's part of what the liquor license requires. That's the, that's in the, that's part of what the liquor license requires. So. But our, our bars are, you know, when, when we greet a guest at our bar, we greet them with a glass of water and a menu. That's, it's pretty typical for diners to come in and sit at the bar, whether they're, you know, with couples or by themselves. It's a, it's, it's a, it's just a more contemporary way of dining.
So this would be the menu right now that you're thinking, really think it would change, yeah.
Yeah.
But they would be greeted at nine o'clock on a weeknight and 10 o'clock on a weekend with the menu?
Correct.
And they can order that. You're going to tell them you have to order within the next five minutes or not?
I mean, we're, we're, we're going to want it, you know, for.
Yeah.
Just for operational purpose and it's, you know, we don't want people coming in dining after. It doesn't make sense for us. We'd rather get our kitchen closed and get our people out of there and move on. So that's, we don't, we don't encourage late night dining.
So then why do you want to stay open until 12?
We don't. We, we just want people that are dining there to be able to finish.
So if you, the kitchen closes at 10?
Yeah, I mean.
Why wouldn't you close at 10:30 or shut the place down by 11?
We can do that.
Okay.
I think that's probably more appropriate for this location.
Yeah. All right. And is it going to be posted on the menu that, you know, after nine, no food or like? Because I read the menu, if I walked in your establishment at nine, I'd be like, okay, I love a lamb burger. Let's do it up. But if you're telling me that, you know, at 9:05, the kitchen's going to close?
Yeah, we do that all the time.
You wouldn't want to, but it's not going to be stated anywhere. There's not going to be signage to that effect or anything?
It's posted right when you walk in the restaurant, that the kitchen.
It is. Okay.
In all of ours.
I've never been, I can't say I've never been in NOVAR, but I've looked for the sign. So, all right. So no food after nine and you, and you do not help Anton staying open until 12?
We do not help Anton staying open, no.
Okay. Good.
Okay. Next item.
Next item is the railing at the base of the stairway.
So that looks like a construction site to me, I'll say. And I still come back to wanting that to be a more welcoming set of entrances. I think I asked for the parking plan, site plan that I think was, definitely came before the planning board since my time on the board, so within the last 10 years. But I don't remember which year. And I think it's going to be really important for us to have that parking plan as we talk about some of the other suggestions people have made. But I also think that it would be helpful to, to consider. And I, and I know it's not just a parking space because it's the, there's a catch space in there for the stormwater. But ideally, I'd, I'd like to see that reconfigured so that we have more sidewalks. And it may result in the loss of a parking space or two. But that would give you, I feel, more welcoming for all of the businesses, but also more safety. And so I'd like for you to, to consider that. And the railing while might address somebody.
Can you pull that up, Tim?
Somebody not running into the parking space. It doesn't address sort of the, you know, the kind of operation, I think, that you want to have as a welcoming for multiple businesses there. So you have, you know, you have the interest to the?
Picture there.
Yeah. I mean, so that's what you find, you know, kind of more, I think it looks like a temporary solution and not kind of a sort of more designed solution. So if you even had that space become no longer a space and that catch space and had to move over, that this becomes an entrance system that works better and still gives you the room to do your display out front, which is always lovely. But it gets constrained by having now a lot of people potentially coming and going there at certain times. So.
So it's, it's a really good suggestion and one I had not considered before. The one thing I always think about in a situation like that is I do, I hate to lose any parking.
I understand that.
I wrestle with that every time we do anything. So I certainly wrestle with it, with that as well. But it certainly may be a good trade off in the grand scheme of things.
Yeah, I, I think the intent was to make it safe for people and not have accidents happen.
And walk right into the parking lot.
But I certainly appreciate what you're saying.
Yeah, you know, it, the letter of the code is always the minimum for safety. So I'm thinking of this from going beyond the letter of the code, you know, to what would be a nicer solution and a safer solution.
I was driving through today and I just want to know, there was somebody trying to get through between the mums and the, and the wall, and they had to turn sideways to get through from going to C V, from the food center to the CBS. They literally had to like sidestep to get through.
Yeah.
Where the mums were and the wall.
I, you know, I'm a very frequent shopper here. And so I, I use this area a lot. But, you know, there are times when people walk through the parking spaces to get to one of the entrances. And I, I do think if you kind of thought of it as an entrance plaza that could welcome you without necessarily having to worry so much about skirting cars coming in or somebody pulling out of a parking space.
I'm actually going to give us more of the square area space too. Give us more of the square area space.
Yes, yes. Yeah. So, you know, I, I'll leave it at that.
But along with the parking, the parking plan.
I really would like to see the site plan. And it's just getting that parking plan that you had before and then thinking about this comment here. Because I think the parking plan will become some kind of an exhibitor and, you know, to the, a decision, which would show like if there's certain parts of the parking lot that get closed at certain times, or, you know, if lighting gets adjusted at certain places. The parking plan that has the lighting on it as well, because lighting is something that we heard is a concern.
And even if it's not the landscaping. And where the dumpsters and trash.
Exactly.
Recycling.
So we actually submitted, I don't know if this helps at all, but we did submit a picture of the entire lot. I don't know if that's in this slideshow.
I think the plan though is like the prepared, maybe by DeSalle Burke, but by, you know, an engineering firm. I, I can look through my records. I, I took a quick look through my electronic records for that from years ago. Tim, would you be able to look through your records in the office for that? That parking application?
Parking was reconfigured recently.
Do you remember what year it was that you reconfigured that lot?
2019.
This must have, it was 2018.
Yeah.
I think that was one of the permits Tim provided, 2018.
Okay. But there was definitely, I, I did find the document which had three dimensional and views of what the lighting would look like. And it showed the lighting coming down on the parking, but I didn't find in my records yet the plan itself. But that, you, you'll recall that too, right?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
So to your point about that whole area, and I didn't have a chance to read all of the amended permits, but in the original permit, it does say, which I found interesting, but I hope it's been amended. But no baking would be permitted on the premises. And no outside sales or the use of exterior sound system would be permitted at any time. So I don't know if you have updated that permit to be able to do that.
I don't know if we have either.
So.
Where is this stuff from?
1982.
But it's still in effect then if it hasn't been amended?
So if it hasn't been updated, it, you know, I would just paid attention to it because I know Cheryl was, you know, concerned about that landing area. It's on page five.
So there's 20 something amendments. And not to kind of short circuit Maggie's point, because I think it's a good one, to be able to go through the kind of tick tock of, of all the times that this has been amended. But I, I, I haven't had a chance to review all of those amendments. I think, you know, I, I think the applicant needs to kind of help us, help them, you know, figure out where we stand in terms of, you know, what are the allowed hours for all these businesses? What are the allowed uses? You know, what's the implication of all of these things? I mean, obviously, you know, the, the fruit center, the Milton Marketplace as it exists today is a product of, you know, almost two dozen different, you know, approvals from the planning board and, and the Board of Appeals. And it's kind of got to this point, sort of unraveling that, you know, and kind of understanding. Because I think a, a, a point that I think we need to kind of settle on, and I, and we do need the applicant's help on this, is, is, do they require further relief from the Board of Appeals? You know, I, I suspect that in one of those amendments, unless, you know, you know, approve baking on site. I have confidence that we'll find that, you know, in there. But in terms of, you know, the hours of this business, in terms of any of the other changes, I think it's important to understand, you know, is, is there further relief needed from the Board of Appeals?
And, and I do think it's just from a business perspective, I think having a total plan for hours of operation. And then within the building, within your building, I understand you have different businesses and the nutshell may not want to be open until 10 o'clock. But maybe there's a night that she wants to be open until 10 o'clock at night. And if the hours of operation for the whole building allows 10 o'clock at night, I would think the nutshell should be able to take advantage of that. Or, you know, the queue, if they want to do like a women's night up there, they should be able to stay open. So I think it gets confusing when there's different hours of operations for different businesses. So just have one set hours of operation for the whole business. So then the neighbors can sort of see who's coming and going. And it is frustrating sometimes having a, a, you know, you cannot do business past a certain time, because I have that. I can only operate a machine till 6 o'clock at night. And if I have someone, a homeowner, who wants to work on their yard and they come in at 6:15 and want to get loaded with a yard emulsion, I said, sorry, I can't load you. So I think to kind of Jim's point, there has to be a close time. It is frustrating, it is challenging, but I think if you are different because you are in a residential neighborhood, and I think we all want to see some type of restaurant there. It's just the number of seats and the hours. This, this menu looks great, but personally, I don't think it's really my concern what kind of food you serve, you know. And you should be able to fluctuate that seasonally or if, I don't know, if all of a sudden you want to do something completely different like sushi, you should be able to do that. But I think just having a set, set guidelines for the whole site would just make everything easier.
All right, next item.
Next item is the keg storage area that we talked about last time. We have a diagram of what that will look like.
Can you pull up that? Storage area? So this looks like it's on the first floor, correct?
It is. It's in the car corral, which is just below the new space.
It's below the staircase, just where that area is, underneath the staircase?
Inside the corral. So as you're walking the main entrance there, typically you'd see to the right there is, we, we use that for pallet drops. You might see a pallet of firewood, pallet of duraflam, pallet of rock salt in the wintertime. And sometimes you'd see a pallet of, you know, water, charcoal, whatever. So we use that space for pallet drops. And it's approximately 11 feet by four feet. But it's not space that we, you know, really need. It's kind of excess pallet drops. So the idea is to take that space, that would become cooler, and then those lines would go directly upstairs.
So those would be active kegs then that would be utilized. So where do you put the keg, when the kegs are empty, where do those go?
They stay out. So there's a, there's a, there's two kegs, one empties. Then when we get it delivered, the empty keg stays in the cooler.
Okay. And that person, that vendor was on the, the list, the pickup and the delivery of those. So, okay. So those, everything fits in, in that business, in that?
Three significant space for, for the six taps.
Okay. Okay. Great. Any other questions on that? All right. Is there anything else or is that?
That was it on that.
That's what, okay, great.
We have some more items, obviously.
There was an exhaust fan information?
That's right, there was, yeah.
I, I know Sean had asked about the odor control and Sean's not able to be with us tonight, so.
But you had asked about a roof line, looking at what the roof?
Yeah, I just also wonder where this goes. And I'm, I'm saying this because I'm pointing to it on my laptop, but I don't know if we can get that view up. Yeah. So can you explain how this works fancy?
I wish I could. I just know it goes on the roof.
Okay.
It's a, it's a filtered, what's coming through the woods.
So, all right. Can you have your supplier like do a written description of where this goes and how it works? And you had mentioned before you would be utilizing what's there from the prior tenant, but is, does this go on that? Are you adding equipment? Yeah. So we had talked about whether you needed to add because you might be having more fryers. Have you thought about the kitchen any further? Whether you would need, you know, additional exhaust from what exists there now?
We wouldn't, not for the, the line. I mean, we're going to be updating equipment.
But not at, anything at the roof level except that adding this?
It's standard, it's standard equipment and the, the existing wood space, all of our equipment will fit on it.
Okay. So if we did a, it did a condition that if you were going to add any other ventilation, that you would have to come back for an amendment? I mean, it's just that the impact of odor to neighbors is of a concern. And you may change your menu or you may decide things as you operate there. But I, I would like if, if somebody who's more knowledgeable, you know, about this equipment could just kind of explain, is it running all the time? Is it run just when it gets turned on? Or is it what triggers it to turn on? Just a little bit more about how it works.
It's, I mean, it's standard equipment that's used in situations like this. The, and the specs are on the, on that cut sheet.
And it's designed to filter odor?
Yes.
How often does it have to be maintained or the filters changed?
Well, I mean, that's a, that's regular maintenance that's done. I mean, it's done depending upon the system. And it's usually monitored by the health private.
They've got something we should consider conditioning, you know, actually monitoring the smells. Because I know when I go to East Milton Square, I can smell fryolators. Not necessarily from your establishment, but someone's frying something and.
You don't like that bacon smell?
I love bacon. I'm a bacon guy, just not 24/7. So I mean, if we conditioned that it has to be, if, if the maintenance schedule for that is every month and we condition it so that it's going to be done every month or maybe every three weeks, it might help the neighbors.
And there is currently existing an issue, according to the neighbors, that, and I know you try to address it, but a six to seven AM, like a burning grease smell periodically. I think we, we do need to, and that's a separate, but we, we will need to sort of find out what, what's causing that.
Is that recent?
It was, it's post the plate, so it's coming from the kitchens. So maybe.
We haven't had a contact in a long time about smells.
Oh, we, we, we just got a letter that was some, last week, someone, as recent as last week. And I can, we can talk about that separately, but we also want to make sure we're, we're addressing current issues as, as well as we go through this. Okay. Anything else on that?
Yes. There's information regarding the lamp lighting in the parking lot.
Right.
Some technical type of explanation about that that I don't fully understand, but.
Yeah, well, the, these are cut sheets on the, on the fixture. I don't see what the, we can, I'll give it another look, but I didn't see what, what it said the controls were. Do you have a timer on these?
We do have a timer. And that's part of another thing we want to talk about. And this is one of John's suggestions that we actually ironically came up with the same idea today. Is that the rear parking lot, we can close that at 7 o'clock. There's no reason for anyone to go back. Well, we still have 105 parking spaces in front of the building. There's no reason for anyone to go behind the building after 7 p.m.
How many spots are back there?
Ninety.
Ninety?
There's ninety spots in the back parking lot, yeah, we have almost, you know...
There's a hundred and five in the front.
So there's certainly no need for, you know, that parking. So, and then those lights are on a timer, and they're in different zones. So we, those lights can go off the same time they go off now.
Okay.
So the lights would go off at 10 o'clock at night, reason being the CVS employees would be back there with their cars, which they are now, so...
How many would that be?
It's only a few.
Can they move, can you move them to the front, so you could close it?
We might be able to turn those lights up at 7, like, and then, but obviously the rest of the parking lot lights would have to stay on till, you know, 11.
Till people leave.
Right, so this is where the site plan will help us quite a bit, so we can see which light fixtures you're talking about?
Right, right.
Which circuits?
True.
Okay.
And then the idea that John had about closing off the Antwerp Street exit, I'm certainly totally open to that. I don't know the legalities of that, though. Can you, for emergency vehicles, can you close?
That's what I don't know.
I don't know. If we just put cones there, I don't know how that works, but I'm certainly game to do that, too.
Maybe signage to start with, and...
Well, no one needs signs, that's the problem, I think.
Yeah, I mean, I guess it's a question, I guess it's a question for the police and fire chiefs, then, about what we can do.
You don't have to lock them, maybe if it's just closed.
So right now, we just put sawhorses out, because they're easy to move, but they certainly make the statement of, you're not supposed to go somewhere. So we could do something similar, again, if it's, if the town's okay with that.
Yeah, that's up to our public safety officials to confirm with, I think.
But that way, no one would be anywhere near the residential area after 7 o'clock, because everything would be up front towards, you know, Bugis Bagels and in front of the building. So, you know, minimum impact to the neighbors in terms of noise, cars, et cetera, and lighting.
So if, so you're talking the, on Antwerp Street by dependable cleaners, by the cleaners?
Correct.
So at what time the cleaners use that parking lot, don't they?
They do, they close at 6.
Oh, do they?
They close at 6, okay. Latest, 6.
But you'd still be able to exit the parking lot, you'd just be able to go off that exit, you'd just go right around.
That's a great idea.
What about access to trash disposal, then? At the end of the night, would your staff be taking bottles, trash, whatever, to the dumpster?
So we talked about that, so we wouldn't do that at night. So, you know, last time we throw out trash, you know, our building's at 7. It'd be the same for him. And then it'd hold the trash in bins till the next morning, and then throw out bottles, cans, trash, whatever, the next morning. That way, again, no one's going out back, you know, after 7 p.m.
So that trash would stay, like, in the fruit center loading dock inside?
So we, they'd be like, we have them now, they're like large bins on wheels, essentially, that recycling goes in and or trash, or whatever else, you know? And they can stay in the building, even upstairs, because, you know? So our side, our kitchen side, no one's in our kitchen after 6 o'clock. So that whole side is accessible to him, and there's a giant area out there that that stuff could just be held until the next morning.
And then not to go, not to beat the parking lot to death, but to, when you close the back parking lot at 7, if you have employees that are parked there, they would stay there until...
So actually, yeah, so that would be, that's a good question. So they'd be there till 7:30 probably, so they could still exit from back there.
We can make it 7:30, it's a lot better than 10.
Or even 8, maybe, if you wouldn't mind. And then at least they could leave, and we'd leave enough room between the sawhorses where they could sneak out. But it would be evident to anyone coming in that that's not where they're supposed to park.
And then Vance, your employees would know not to park back there?
So we would cone off spots up, right across, as far away from the building as we can, of course, there will be benefits, Bugis, we can cone off spots there, so that his people, when they come in, they park there. So again, at the end of the night, they're as far away from the neighbors as they can be.
I mean, something that we had thought about the last several days, and I think it's a good idea, if they can shut down that portion of the parking lot at night like that. And if you need to see it at all, it's, I have one of the plans here.
I think we could just send it over, you don't have to do it right now, but it's...
It's actually electronically been sent, and Tim has it.
Okay, Tim?
The town engineer sent it to us.
Today? Did it come in today? Okay.
Yeah, because I don't see, I don't see it in the folder, though.
Yeah, Alan created some aerial images. I can bring those up if we want to look at them.
And it has delineated parking spots?
Yes.
And the number of dumpsters, and all of the composting and compactor?
I don't know if those, I have to see this image. I don't know if those are on this image. I have an older image that is very similar, but this is a new one, so...
I mean, these are, these are, these are kind of, these are aerials and maps off of the GIS, so they may need to be annotated by the applicant if they haven't already done so. It's actually not off the GIS, it's off of another service that we use. But it's a very clear, up-to-date image of the site parking, you know, everything that's on the site currently. So just give me a second to bring this up.
Thanks, Tim.
You can pass this around if you'd like, it gives you a good view of it.
Yeah, I know what we're looking at, so we're like, here back, right?
It would be cut off.
From like there back.
Yeah, that's my envision. I don't know where the dumpster is.
I mean, if you'd like, I could go up there and point those to the dumpsters.
The dumpsters are back.
Yeah.
The dumpsters are behind, beside the loading docks. Can you goodbye?
We were talking about, you know, from here back, we can block out, this entire backyard can be blocked out at 7 o'clock, 7, 8 o'clock, whatever. These lights can all go off at 8 o'clock. So our employees can, as far as dumpsters go, they're, right now, it's a compactor. So we used to have a dumpster, we added a compactor this past summer, which is wonderful, because it's 14 plus days before we can begin pickups to seal the container, as opposed to a six-day-a-week dumpster pickup. So that's essentially right by the loading dock, which is right here, so, right here. And then right in front of that dumpster is where we have our compost barrels. There's 14 compost barrels in that location, and they get picked up twice a week.
Great, thank you.
And what, when you look at the, or when you send us the lighting plan for the parking, I'd be curious, I don't recall what the lighting is, like, along this line. But, you know, like, if you're, if this was now proposed to be lit until midnight, that may impact this butter, so... I don't know if that's anything that, then maybe there's not a pole there, so I can look at, when I go by there next time, or if you have that on the lighting plan?
There are a couple poles there. There's also one spotlight, it's on one of the light posts in the street that actually shines, you know, on that area of the lot as well.
And that's on all the time?
And that's, so that's not our, it's not our light, it's the star, or whoever.
Yeah.
So, but yeah, and that goes off, I think, around 10 o'clock as well. So that wouldn't necessarily have to stay on.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So the number of spots that you were describing that are not included in those 90, what was the number of spots, parking places?
195 total.
So 105 would be less than 90?
Correct.
Yes.
And that's not including the municipal parking lot?
Yeah, so there's that lot, too, which is at the end of the night, so...
Right, that's, I just...
It's five times more parking than we need, certainly after 7 o'clock.
All right, anything else that you would submit?
You had asked for the hours of operation, and I have that, and I, Tim has it. I mean, it's 11 to 3 every day for lunch. It's 3 to 9 for dinner on Sunday through Thursday. Dinner is 3 to 10, with the last call at 11, 11:30. And brunch is on Saturday and Sunday from 11 to 3.
Yeah, so last call at 11 or 11:30, you mean, and we're back to the midnight close, right?
We're trying to stay away from the midnight close, and Vance has indicated a desire to do that.
Okay.
I mean, I'd like to see, like, if you follow the CVS hours, where maybe last call's at 10, and everyone's out of there by 10:30 or 11, and all the employees are out of there by 11?
We'll talk about that, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know, it's a premature...
A lot of other restaurants are 9, 9 Sunday through Thursday, and 10 on Friday and Saturdays.
And so that would be, the restaurant closes at 10, and then employees would sort of be there until 11, doing cleanup? So the last employee would sort of be 11, is that, I wonder what's typical?
Yeah, when the restaurant closes, before the last employee locks the door and has cleaned up for the night?
Well, it's all kind of relative, so it's...
Depending on the...
At the end of the night, there's only probably two or three employees that leave at the very end of the night. It tapers down throughout the evening.
And how long would that take after a close? Normally, I know it varies, probably.
You know, maybe an hour, hour and a half.
Okay.
So, this has a last call at 11, Sunday through Thursday, and the kitchen closes at 9. So if someone is coming in to have dinner, and how long is the average? Like, what do you factor, somebody an hour and a half at a table for dinner?
Hour and a half.
So why would you need two hours for, after that kitchen close for a last stop?
We don't.
You don't?
No.
Okay. Just trying to see if we can pare back the hours to most seconds.
I think we can, I think it's going to be probably more appropriate for this location, anyway.
Okay. So normally, like, if I think about the way I am as a customer, I'm not having another cocktail at, you know, an hour and a half after I eat, but maybe somebody has a nightcap, right? Is that what you're, what you find? Okay.
And I have a list of all the restaurants in the Milton area with their hours. You may want to have a copy of these, pass it around. Just gives you an idea about the restaurants, and most of them, like, Steel and Rye are open pretty much the same hours.
Yeah, the thing is, Steel and Rye is not right up against residential, single-family homes. That's, and it's, it's in the business district, and, you know, that's the challenge here. You know, the building happens to be very close to the property line, too, so, you know...
But they close at 9 on Sunday through Thursday, and 10 on Friday and Saturday.
So is that last call at 10, or is that closed at 10?
That's last call, right?
What's?
I think they close, I think those are their...
They close their kitchen.
Yeah.
So it's the same, it's the same with every restaurant, there's nine other restaurants in East Milton Square.
In business districts?
I'm sorry, so when does Steel and Rye actually lock their doors, so you can't get in and get a drink?
I don't know, you'd have to ask.
Okay, so 10 doesn't, so 10...
It's not really those, yeah.
That's the kitchen closes at 10.
This is the kitchen, though.
Yeah, well, it's whatever their liquor license says, I would bet.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. So I had a few questions, just now that we've gone through all those materials, just... At our, at our last meeting, you had said, stated publicly, that Navara seats, 180? So the site plan approval is actually for 140 indoor seats and 20 exterior seats. And you were required to have that posted inside, so you have a maximum of... You are only approved to have 160 seats in your restaurant. And you have that posted? Because that was also, that was also required, so it's not a 180-seat restaurant. Okay, just to clarify that. And also, under the site plan approval, you were required to have valet parking? And you did, when you first opened, you had valet parking? And you decided just you don't need it anymore?
I don't think it was a requirement.
It's in your site plan approval, and I can read it, too. "Applicants shall provide a valet parking plan in collaboration with the Milton Traffic Commission to further disperse traffic to yet another, to yet another location from a valet station on Adams Street as evidenced in the VPN Parking Solutions Valet Parking Plan." And it says it throughout numerous, numerous places. You also claimed that you've always had the Rockland Trust parking lot? And I just, if you could just, you said, oh, you've always had the Rockland?
No, we leased that two years ago.
And you still currently have that lease? Could you provide a copy of that current lease? Okay, that would be great. And also, I know in Abbey Park, you are required to lease from Citizens Bank and from Dolan Funeral Home. Do you still have those leases?
We have the original documents.
But are you still paying to lease those spots?
We never did.
It was just an agreement?
It was just an agreement.
And it was just, there wasn't a term on it, it was just an open-ended?
Yeah, it was an open-ended agreement.
Okay. I think that would be helpful if you could send those, too, just to make sure that those are still active, and that there was not a term limit on that.
So they're just letting you use their parking for free? It's very nice of them.
And Rockland still is, because it hasn't always been Rockland?
Rockland is a paid lease.
That is a paid lease, so you do have a...
We got that just to have extra parking.
Okay, that's great. Could we get a copy of that lease? Okay, that would be great. Another item that I just found, some discrepancies in addition to the parking, pest control, are you currently in contract with the pest control company?
Yes.
Okay. We'd like to, I'd like to see that, please. And one of the things that I found pretty concerning is, "Applicant will provide protections for adjoining premises against detrimental or offensive uses on-site by providing the following site plan features: solid waste management, the grease storage and removal, really specifically, trash vendors..." Oh, sorry. "Applicant presented a plan for, for storage and removal of solid waste at twice-weekly intervals, and shall contract with trash vendors to arrange pickup at mid-morning times to minimize disruptions to the neighbors, to the extent practical. Trash pickup schedules may be adjusted as necessary as determined by the Board of Health to minimize odors and rodent infestation." As you know, there's, there's a recent significant rodent problem in East Milton Square. "Applicants shall create an enclosed, secure dumpster location located near the service entrance at the rear of the restaurant as shown on the site plan in effort to locate the dumpsters as far from the residential neighborhood located at 20 churches possible. Applicants shall enclose the dumpster with wooden enclosure and place it on a concrete pad with a spigot nearby and provide water for cleansing purposes. Applicant shall provide and design for clean, secure waste." And it goes on in different places to talk about that it shall be an enclosed, and that it should be emptied, detailed for disposal, just as all throughout here, as part of the decision, and implement for storage and removal of solid waste. It goes on, odor-free conditions. "Applicant has provided a secure waste storage, and shall comply with the design." I actually was curious on how all the trash in a restaurant like yours that is supposedly 160 seats but 180 manages their trash, because I know, I've been back to see the marketplace, and it is immaculate. It is clean, it is contained, it is very neat. Tim, could you share, I shared with members of the board, and could you pull up the photos of the current conditions of Navara's trash storage? And we can just... So this is where you keep your linens, so that's why we were curious about the linen, how that is delivered and picked up, and...
Do we know when these were taken, Meredith?
These were two hours before the last, the opening of our public hearing. Next photo. These are empty propane tanks from the outside lights. This is how, how their recycling is handled, all of the cardboard. Okay, that's one. This is the second one. So for not too much of a smaller restaurant, this is what you're going to have to manage, Michael. So for not too much of a smaller restaurant, this is what you're gonna have to manage, Michael. This is just a side view with starting to see some of the kegs and again, how the linens are managed. These are bussing bins, just plastic storage and covering some of the chemicals that are probably for cleaning.
And that on the, we go back, Tim? That tent, is that seating on the upper left there?
That's it.
The back patio?
It's a patio.
Okay.
And is this just extra storage for bussing trays that you're not currently using? Or do you, those get brought in at night?
No, this is excess equipment.
Just storage, so you need extra storage on this, at this restaurant site, but you wouldn't?
We have off-premise storage.
You have what?
We have off-premise storage.
So this is on-premise, though?
This is on-premise, yeah.
Okay, so you need off-premise and on-premise storage?
We do have it.
For a restaurant? Okay, these are the empty kegs. This is how they're stored at Navara. Extra recycling bins, because there's overflow?
Those are probably just being cleaned.
This is the way you have it, there's no door on there right now and you're required to have it.
There's a door on the, the dumpster area is enclosed, the recycling area is blocked off. That's where the, the cardboard is.
Okay, so this is the dumpster? It's not closed, it's wide open?
Well, I mean, it's closed.
And I'll, you keep it closed, it wasn't closed, so you don't keep it closed? So this is when the neighbors are, you know, when you're cleaning up. This is why the hours are important, the cleanup hours. There is a breaking of glass, a shattering, it's, I know your neighbor might not hear it, she, that's good, she doesn't. But there are other neighbors who have complained that they do hear it. So this is again, storage, extra boxes that just didn't get recycled, bottles that didn't get thrown away, I guess. I don't know if you want to speak to what this storage area is. And there's chairs, there's table, there's extra things too. And mops, cleaning equipment.
I'm not sure when these pictures were taken, we have a maintenance staff that works outside.
Two hours before the last, two weeks ago, right before the opening of this public hearing?
We keep the property very clean. We have a maintenance team that brings equipment out because we have hoses out there to operate, so I'm not.
It normally doesn't look like this, you're saying?
No, it doesn't.
Okay, well, it still does, and I would like for you to, maybe Mr. McNosa can go tomorrow, take a look with you. More linens, this is just a perspective, looking through to see the capacity of the, of the area that's required for his restaurant. And this is only one of the restaurants, this is not. So here we are, extra propane tanks, old air conditioners, there's actually a shoe sitting on top with buckets. See somebody's flip-flop. Another angle view. At Revit, there's actually plastic with, I don't know what's all back there, but something's being stored and covered up with black stretch of plastic between the screening and the neighbors.
Now, was this in the residential area? Was this the, where the house was and it was taken down to pre-parking? Do they have a split commercial residential?
Yes, this is the Church Street parking lot, yeah.
It's a business district.
This is a business, this is, okay.
The houses were in the business district.
The houses were in the business district, okay.
Yeah, I mentioned that because I was.
Yep.
Part of that, okay.
Yep.
But that doesn't make it okay, right? Just because it's in the business district to operate like this, right?
No, no, it's not in the.
Everybody was saying it was in the residential district.
Yeah, no, I just, I was just wondering.
It's a small house.
But it's a. Yeah, there's a house on the other side of this, so, okay. I think that might be the last one. So essentially, you're in violation of your site plan approval on a number of issues, which is a concern, really a concern for Mr. McNosa, who's entertaining a tenant lease. I, I don't even think I've gone through everything, but there are, there are definitely some issues. And I especially, it's not just a site plan approval that you're violating your permit on a number of the issues, it's, this is a Board of Health issue and it should be a real concern of yours as the manager of this, of this restaurant. And the fact that you think you have a 180-seat restaurant when it's a 160-seat restaurant? You might want to check to see what you posted in the front and how many seats you actually have and that you haven't brought more seats in than what your site plan approval allows for.
And the valet parking is gone?
And the valet parking, which is gone, and I'm, we won't get into it now, but you have 39 parking spaces tied to 4 Franklin and Abbey Park has 32. And that's gonna have to be addressed if, once the Falcone project begins and you lose that parking.
Well, that's why we leased the Rockland Trust parking lot.
Okay. All right, for, all right, this, so we'll see that lease and see the agreement that's been made, that's great.
So the problem I'm having is that, I understand that you guys want to expand and I think it's great, but I mean, I'm not seeing pictures of your operation, I'm seeing pictures of yours. And you have two restaurants within a couple hundred feet of each other. I don't know how Abbey Park's around, but I mean, I'm sure Navara is great, but it just, as an outsider looking in, it doesn't look so good. And now you want to bring your operation further into a residential area? It makes it tough for me to make a decision. So that's, that's why we're doing this, we're not here to beat you up, I'm just, I'm just looking.
We would do this with anybody.
You know what I'm saying? Hearing from residents and it's just like, what are we supposed to do here? That's, that's the reason why we're talking about this.
I can't say those are normal conditions, I don't know when those pictures were taken. We inspect the property, we get inspected, we have regular health inspections, we have building inspections. We don't.
Mr. McNosa, he can go tomorrow and go see if all of this is still there? It was there two hours before the, our meeting, two weeks ago, or last week, I'm sorry. We met last week, this was only last week.
16th, I think, we last met, yeah.
So have there been any complaints filed against either of your restaurants to the Building Department or the Health Department?
So just a process question. The permit would be going to Milton Marketplace LLC, correct? Because Jim brought up a good point, so that is who the permit is going to, correct?
Site plan approval, yeah.
The site plan approval is going.
It says the applicant is Vance Walsh.
Yeah.
It says the owner.
Because again, I always come back to my situation, I have a similar situation. I'm a renter, saying my business is a renter. And my permit was given to me personally, my brother personally, my business personally, as well as the property owner, which is my family's LLC. So that's why I'm just trying to understand who the permit is issued to. So if there's a problem, who gets the phone call to resolve the problem?
So, Tim, in a situation of a, of a lease and a property owner, if the applicant is the leaseholder, that's who the permit is issued to, correct?
I mean, we're discussing the site plan approval that enables the various improvements to the Fruit Center building. So it's a little bit of a gray kind of area, but, you know, as, we're here because there were physical changes made to the building by the Milton Marketplace. And that's the amendment to the site plan approval that we're talking about.
So the applicant's really the Milton Marketplace, not Vance Walsh, just manager of 10.
Well, I mean, the way that the application works is there's an owner and there's an applicant. I think, I think ultimately, you know, again, we can check in with town council about this, but I mean, in most cases, ultimately, the owner is responsible.
And it's an amendment to an existing approval and Vance Walsh was not a part of that original approval.
That's correct.
So it would need to be then to the Fruit Center, in which case all the conditions flow to the Fruit Center or to the Menos or Antwerp Street Realty Trust or.
And I would think that as a property owner, if you get the approval for a restaurant up there, it might benefit you because if for some reason there's a change of restaurant owner, wouldn't the Fruit, the Milton Marketplace would still have the permit? And then you could possibly just get another.
Because it's actually under, Navara is different from, it's interesting, Abbey Park, it's under Falcone as the applicant. And it runs with, depending on, as long as the conditions are continued to be met, would run to another, a similar operation.
Yeah.
It would be like, you know, the lighter fare or to the plate, you know, it would just have been a similar.
Given that this is an amendment to an existing permit, this would have to go to the original permit holder. So I think the application would have to get revised also, one more time.
And then when we condition this and we are able to have some kind of consequence to our conditions, that would go to Mike or Vance?
Well, and then I think, you know, obviously this is something for you two to work out, but you would make your lease arrangements that he would be subject to the conditions.
Yeah, but as far as we're concerned, we would go, like, who, who are we talking to?
So right now, there is a, there's a permitted use for a restaurant up there, so within, within the existing space. Whether the hours are, you know, are changed and those are amended, but this is really to see if we are willing to amend the use of the enclosed area for the purpose of expansion. And under Vance, his proposal is to put the bar there and.
Right, and with that.
And have a, have a shared use.
With that approval, we're going to put conditions on it, right?
If we approve the enclosed area and the expansion of the restaurant.
Like, for example, the filtration system isn't being maintained. So then what happens? Do we levy a fine to?
There is a, there is a code, there's a, yeah, there's a process that's in here, that's.
Okay.
For violations, if they're not.
Right, and I guess I was just wondering who's responsible for those violations, I, I'm just.
And usually if there's, you know, a permit violation, which it happens, I'm not judging anybody for permit violations, because it happens. But there is usually time to, to correct it and cure the problem without it being, you know, a financial fine. It's just like, oh, do you know this is happening? And you just, you know, because we're all humans.
No, I get that, I still try to figure out who would be responsible for clearing.
That was my question, right, yeah. The permit holder is ultimately responsible.
All right, thank you.
Okay, all right, so I think this is a point, it's quarter to 10:00, thank you all very much for coming. And, but we do, would like to, we promised, you know, some of the butters and neighbors an opportunity to come and speak tonight. So I think at this time, if you all want to stay and listen to comments made or, but we will have to, we will, after we hear them, we'll continue the public hearing, so that's.
That's fine.
Great, great, yeah, thank you. Right, so if there's anyone either on Zoom or in the public who would like to address the board at this time, feel free to come and join us. And if you could just state your name and address for the record, thanks.
My name is Jen Shea, I live at 53 Wood Street. And I, my backyard abuts, a wooded lot that kind of abuts that big parking lot that we were discussing earlier. I originally, I don't really have a lot to say, other than I just wanted to add, I have concerns about the timing and I heard it was gonna be closing at midnight and that's kind of my main concern, being that our backyard abuts that big lot. But it sounds like that is being worked on, so that's kind of all I wanted to comment on. Just, I have concerns about the hours being in a better of that wooded lot. In addition to that, Monday, there was a surveyor in my property, that wooded lot. It's a separate thing, but I think that there's going to be something built there potentially. And I worry about trees coming down, that's like a natural buffer for noise and stuff. So that is adding to my concern about the noise and just the late hours. Definitely happy to support local businesses and restaurants, but I think being in a residential area, closing at midnight or, you know, somewhere around there is too late for a residential zoned area.
What's reasonable?
Well, you don't have to answer right now, that's a lot of pressure.
I'm sorry, I just, I'm dying to get it.
And I think it's more than just Jen coming up with that, perhaps the.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to put you on the spot.
Perhaps the East Milton Neighbor Association should meet and maybe present a plan that they think that might be reasonable.
Better idea, thank you, Maggie.
And that was, that was actually something I was gonna also suggest, it would be nice. Typically, I know, Michael, you've always met with the neighbors and, you know, gotten together when talking about different plans that things are happening. And I think that fell through the cracks this time and it didn't happen, so I think that, in the meantime, would also be a good, good thing to do, so, okay.
Meredith, we've got a hand up on the Zoom.
Yes, you can please introduce them, Tim?
All right, Carol Joyce Harrington, if you want to give us your name and address for the record.
You may need to unmute yourself.
You with us, Carol?
No.
Okay.
We heard you.
You're with us, like it or not.
Cold feet, no worries. Oh, she's back, so let me, Carol, if you, if you want to speak to the board, give us your name and address for the record.
Hello?
Hello, welcome, Carol.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, good, okay, I'm trying to do this on my phone, so it's not, not too easy. This is Carol Joyce Harrington, I'm at 41 Franklin Street. And I think I'm speaking for a lot of the neighbors on Franklin Street that abut the back of the Fruit Center. And there's a couple of items I'd want to bring up. The first being the exhaust smells. I know when Navara was going in, we certainly made it a point to let them know that we didn't want to, you know, start smelling the fish fry Friday that was on the menu. The smells have been terrible. I know Michael's been doing his best to mitigate a lot of that and he tries. But now we've got a restaurant and when Navara was going in, they had to put in some special air filtration system that maybe Sean knew about. So if they could go back and take a look at that and not just put in the standard, but something that's, that's really strong to help these people that just literally back up to the Fruit Center. The operating hours, again, you know, shorter than longer. The midnight thing is a no-go in my book. The parking, I know there was a discussion about when the Falcone project goes in, that 4 Franklin is gonna go. I'd be curious to find out how many people are usually utilizing the Rockland Bank. I mean, are they walking all that way in the dead of winter to go to Navara or Abbey or the. or the new place? Or are they going to be parking on our front lawns, literally? That's happened too. And let's see. I think Maggie mentioned she'd like to hear what the truck route was. I have seen 18 wheelers coming down from Granite to, excuse me, Adams using Franklin Street and trying to bend that corner onto Bassett to get into the Fruit Center after they did their deliveries at Abbey or Navara. So if, you know, they maintain that they have to have the loading on Adams Street where they should be loading and unloading, they should just keep going down Adams and then Granite and then into Bassett, not bringing their trucks down in front of homes or idling in front of homes. A lot of the folks that live back up to the Fruit Center on Franklin, they're concerned about the noise and the lighting. There was something on the design called the display garden. And I think that's an area where the plate at one point had put a little patio kind of thing out there for their employees, just to take a break. It hangs over, literally, you know, a fence, somebody's backyard. So if this display garden is going to be something with open windows and, you know, lighting, you've got small children, families, elderly, all along that, that back wall there of the Fruit Center in their backyards. So I think that's about it. Sorry for rambling.
Thank you, Carol. Anyone else here, please come? Welcome.
Thank you. Fancy. Andy D'Amano, 26 Pear Street. I am a board member of the East Milton Neighborhood Association. Yes, we are working on something. So, you know, we'll have that together and forward it to you and maybe, you know, to, to the applicants as well. One thing I noticed, and I was sitting pretty far away, but I didn't notice any fresh produce vendor on that vendor list. Do you guys have that? Oh, you'll be a produce vendor? What you deliver? Wet, moody elevators being used for that. And the other thing I was curious is, is holding trash overnight okay with the Health Department?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
Holding trash overnight. Mike was saying they were holding trash overnight in the bins. And I was just wondering if that was copacetic with the Health Department. We have been getting a lot of calls and a lot of emails about this project from the neighbors. And, you know, there's a lot of concerns. And I think, you know, we can collate those for you and get them off. They're, they're not mine necessarily, but, you know, as a board member, it's really, I don't, it's not my view that counts, it's what the people in the neighborhood are coming to us with. So just to understand this, you can have a drink, there's two bars in this location, you could have a drink in one bar, have the drink in your hand and walk through a common space to the second bar.
That's what's being proposed.
And you can do this during the day because they're open for lunch.
That's what's being proposed.
And you could then co-mingle with patrons of the nutshell and a young woman who'll go to the queue, and that's what's being proposed. Yeah, I have a problem with that, you know? And I think a lot of people do. It just seems like a clunky sort of thing to have happen, to have to walk through a common area and co-mingle with people who are not participating in the restaurant. Or it just seems odd to me, I don't know. That is me, by the way. The deliveries, you know, are they going to have multiple beers on tap? And if so, usually those microbrews have, you know, very specific vendors. And I didn't really see them, I only saw one. And, and some of those microbrews only deliver themselves. So I think there might be a few more vendors that come through there. The hours, most people want, were saying they don't want anything after 9:00 PM. And they want, want it shut down at 9:00 PM. Not last serve at 9:00 PM, people out of the building, not driving. This is what we're hearing so far, so take that for what you want. Is there any other plan for expansion up there now? You know, or are there any changes that they see coming for existing shops? Do the queue and the nutshell have leases? And if so, when do they expire? Another, you know, a lot of people are wondering what's next? If this goes in, what's next? There's, there's more space up there. There's a, you know, a framer who is, you know, he's never there. You know, he's a great guy and he does great work, but, you know, it's mostly a storage spot and he works by appointment only and he could find somewhere else easily. And that's another big chunk. Will Abbey Park and Navaro have use of the lot? The parking lot? And, you know, and who is going to do the enforcement of these rules? The original, like, 1982, I looked at it and it calls for security 24/7, 365. You know, and I know that was 1982, you know, but I would say part of a condition would be that there's always a parking lot attendant in the lot when they're open. And I think that would help both businesses. Both the Fruit Center and the restaurant, should it be approved, because that parking lot is chaotic. The layout's odd, it's just, it is, everybody knows it. It's not like Trump, but, yeah. It, it, it would help. Let's see. I don't think anybody uses those satellite parking lots. I, I don't, I may be wrong there, there might be a few people. I know nobody uses Dolan because I live right across the street and nobody uses Dolan. They do park on Pear Street. Most people go into that restaurant and staff park on a street. I would like to see the staff have a parking permit to the, what's that called? Municipal lots.
I think that was in the, one of the permits.
Yeah, but, you know, I would say it should be recommended that, I would love to see it for both Abbey Park, Navaro and this new place, that it's, you got to buy them, you know? And if you buy them, you're going to have people use them. Because this is the number two concern of most of our inquiries, is that people are parking all over. Now, I live there, I walk my dog, I can tell you waitress owns the Ford Bronco parked in one spot. I could tell you who owns this car, Franklin, you know, it's pretty obvious. Yeah, the car are all dressed in black and they're walking that way, you know? So that's a big issue. And I think if management pressed upon their staff where to park and that is not in the lot, right? I mean, not in, in the neighborhood, but maybe they park it over, over at Rockland. Although, I do know some waitstaff, because my daughter's of that age and her friends work there, they won't park over there. Why? Because they don't want to walk over there, back over there at night. It's dark, they have to cross two main roads. And it's, they don't feel safe doing it. And I suspect a lot of patrons don't feel safe doing it either. I don't feel safe crossing those roads in the day, much less at night. So I, I don't think that's the answer. I don't, I really don't think they, they use that. No food after nine, guests out by 10, staff out by, what would that be? Two hours later, 11, 12, 11? Too late. I think it's too late for the people who live around there. This, this neighborhood's already overburdened and, and going to become even more so for the next couple of years. It's going to be really hectic with the Falcone Cochran building going up, which starts soon, 440 is already causing little problems where people are cutting up, you know, Pear Street is now two-way, even though it's not supposed to be. I mean, literally 10, 15 cars every morning, every night going. And of course, if you're going the wrong way on a one-way, you got to do it at 60 miles an hour because, you know, you want to get it over with. It's really becoming a problem. So, you know, I can't imagine, you know, what it's going to be like to add in another restaurant and burden these people, especially wanting a residential. Issue is with enforcement. You guys could write all the conditions that sound fantastic. We see it, the neighbors see it, especially at Navara. The enforcement, I know Vance just told you that you can only have two drinks at the bar. And you're supposed to have food to have drinks at the bar. I can tell you my own experience because I've done it. I've gone there and had more than two drinks numerous times and never ate. I mean, nobody's enforcing these rules. So, you know, you could write the conditions, but the conditions are a dog with no teeth. Until we get better enforcement. And if I'm not mistaken, the enforcement's done by inspectional services, correct? Because it's a special permit, is that correct?
Yeah.
I mean, it's, you know, it's not police. And there have been issues. There have been recent issues at Navara. And I, I'm not going to enumerate them now, but if you want them later, I can, I can get them for you. And they're not very, they're not very flattering of late. Now, I must say, for years, there was nothing, but then there was an explosion of problems over the last couple of months that were pretty, pretty serious. And I believe, you know, there was need to have security in the dining room. You can ask Vance right now about it. You know, I, I don't think we need another drinking establishment in East Milton Square. If you go from Brick and Beam, which I know is in Quincy, but, you know, it's 100 yards from Milton, include the Common Market Complex, which has ballast kitchen and bar, Darcy's Pub, and then another restaurant, I think it's called, I forget what it's called. But it serves liquor. There are seven restaurants where you could get something to eat and get a drink in a half a mile. We don't, the neighbors, we don't need another one. And I, I don't think the majority of the neighbors want one either. So that's what we're hearing. You know, part of that's me, part of that's what, what we're hearing from the neighbors. So if we could get some of those questions answered and some of those issues, you know, kind of rectified, then maybe cut the hours down drastically. I don't know, you know? But right now, it really seems like the neighborhood is dead set against it. And, yeah, I guess that's it for me. Thank you for your time.
Right. I don't know if Vance, I don't know if you want to answer any of those questions now or put something together? Or, Michael, I'm sorry.
Oh, I would add that, you know, the group wants to get together, you know, with the East Milton Neighborhood Association, we would be happy to do that.
All right, maybe that's a good next step and then can answer some of those questions.
Well, let me confer with everybody.
Did you have other people?
I was just going to say, but we want to do a site walk and would it be appropriate to have a representative or representative from the East Milton Neighborhood Association there? I mean, site walks are open to public anyway, right, aren't they?
You mean to go to?
Go to the Milton Marketplace, so we can see.
So the spaces that we're talking about?
Correct, yeah, we can see, as Andy pointed out, if it's an odd situation, you know, walking through.
Yeah, I, I mean, I go up there all the time, but if we want to do a site walk, I mean, we could do that too, so. But you could go up there and see.
Where the trash would be kept overnight or where.
Yeah, and go into the, yeah. Because I believe there's been work being done currently and configuration and how, what does the board think about that?
I mean, I could wander around by myself if that's a.
I did that two weeks ago.
Did you? I haven't been up there.
The door was open, I just walked in.
Upstairs?
There was nobody working, but I'm a construction guy, it was safe.
You brought your hard hat?
The hard hat.
With the official?
The hard hat, flip flops.
I would be fine, what would be a good day for people?
I don't know, maybe it's not necessary, maybe it's, maybe it's.
A Monday? You have Mondays off during the day, but you, what is your schedule?
I'm open, I mean, it would be helpful.
This kind of depends on the day, but I, you know, as long as I don't have something else scheduled, I can, I can do it. I was just kind of wanting to understand a little bit better, I think, what was said about, by, I think it was Carol Joyce Harrington, about the, the space on the, I know the spaces she's talking about, but I don't know what the condition is like near the neighbors there. And I don't recall, I'm looking for the plan here now, what's proposed in that space outdoors. I'm not sure, I'm not seeing, I'm not finding the plan in the folder, but.
It's that little balcony that's off the glass. It's only sort of a window in the.
But what's being proposed there now? It's called out as displays, what she said? Display garden, so landscape. So that's what it is now, right, landscapes?
Let's see, I don't know.
Right here. So if you were sitting in the, in the current plate, if you were sitting here, there's that outdoor space here.
I didn't get that far. I went in here, I went in there. No, I got to here, I didn't get in there.
Yeah, you've been to the plate though, right?
Oh, yeah.
So that seating area had this little outdoor space, so that's not changing.
There's no seats called out there, right?
No, there was no access.
There's no access to that outdoor space.
To that space, it was just ornamental.
And that's not changing, it looks like.
So Vance, do you want to come just to answer a couple of questions? Like regarding, are you legally allowed to hold trash at night? If you want to come back to, you could answer a few while we're here and just a few items that were just asked, just to give clarity on some things. Welcome back. Are you, are you allowed to hold trash?
I actually can officially say, so I'm going to have to say I don't know. But I, you know, so I guess we'd have to look at that.
Okay.
You know, so.
Before we, yeah, promise anything, yeah, we can't. So that would be something we should, we should look at. Do you have extended leases with the other current businesses?
We have leases, I can't tell you when, off the top of my head, when they end. We do have leases, yes, not with all the tenants, but with the queue, with the toy chest.
Okay.
Not with Mr. Fisk at the end of the hall.
Okay.
But like I said, I don't know offhand when they expire.
Julie Foley would have that information.
All right, if you could maybe just follow up and let us know that it's, because those are really important businesses to the community. So old trash, display garden, you asked about that. The, were you planning to have Abbey Park and Navara use the Fruit Center parking area?
It's not something we ever discussed or considered, so.
No, thanks, but, okay. So thinking about big picture and where we're going to be when Falcone starts is a, is a reality that will.
I think we're all very concerned about that.
Yeah. And then, security, we can, we can talk about that at the opening hours. And then, are any, so who parks at the Rockland, just the Rockland Trust parking lot?
We encourage our employees to park that.
We encourage our employees to park that.
Okay. All right. Did you ever use that as part of your valet? Where, when you had valet parking, where were those cars being parked?
We use the existing lots, we just control them.
Okay. So, there was enough at Fort Franklin and the other eight?
Do you have information about parking on your website?
We do.
And it directs people to the parking lots?
So, and one other thing that I just wanted to ask, so when you had valet parking, you used to be able to park tandem, like normal, at the Church Street parking lot. You now leave your keys and they shuffle the, they move the cars depending on when people need to get out, which does impact the neighbors. I've, that's, I've heard a comment, there's lights going on and there's a continual shuffling, which is to be expected because you're parking behind other cars and then you gotta get one out. Was that part of your original site plan approval, is you were gonna be?
Well, those, when we were open, we had a valet.
You had a valet, so. Which is what is required, again, in your site plan approval. All right, I think that was, there's a few other, yeah.
Can you speak to the accusation of any kind of violence or anything that was going on at your restaurants, or you had to have a security guard in your restaurant to calm things down?
We've never had a fight in the restaurant. We, we took precautions. It was a brief period that seemed to handle the problem, we don't seem, we didn't continue it. We had a, we had a few problems earlier in the year and?
With patrons or with employees or?
No, it was with customers.
Okay, I'm just wondering, we just, we hear a lot of stuff, so I'm just trying to weed through it all.
That's what we do, we manage our business well, and we've never had any violence in the restaurant.
What about outside in the parking lot or spill over into the sidewalk or anything?
Well, that's why we, we brought us in help when that happened.
So, there was some kind of fight?
No, there wasn't actually a fight, it was just people making noise. Yeah. And then we kept somebody on to patrol the parking lot to make sure that it wasn't continuing.
Okay.
And the people that were causing those problems don't come in anymore, you know, let them in.
Good. Thank you.
Great. Anything else for now?
The, I think last time, someone had made a comment about dedicated parking for Uber Eats and DoorDash. Have you thought about that? Whether that would make sense?
It might make sense, I, I'm not sure how much Uber Eats traffic that this restaurant would be for.
But Michael's thought about it.
Yeah, so I don't, you mean for this particular project?
Yeah, I was thinking, yeah, but if you have other?
Yeah, so, well, I don't know that it is necessary, well, for a couple of reasons. I mean, if you go back to the plate, a significant portion of their business was Uber Eats, and there's never really an issue except for guys wandering around trying to figure out where the plate was. But as far as them getting in and out, there was, there wasn't a whole lot of issues. Again, remember, we almost have almost 200 parking spaces, we're self-contained, these Uber drivers aren't gonna be in the streets, you know, in people's driveways or wherever else, they're, they're in our parking lot. And like I said, I think, based on the number of people the plate served, I think Andy mentioned about 300 a day, this restaurant wouldn't come close to that. And a good portion of that was takeout from the plate and Uber Eats. So, I don't think we'd need it, but also too, even if we had designated spots, I don't know if they would know to use them, or how would they, how would they know? So, that was my thought.
Some places, those deliveries are being done by bike and moped and motorcycle, et cetera.
Yeah, I've never seen a moped in the, in the locker room when the plate was here or, or ever, really, yeah.
Drones are the future.
They're up and down Randall Ave.
And bikes.
I, I, I'm just curious what, like, you know, if some of the takeout businesses in East Milton Square, could they be on bikes instead of cars? But it was just, you know, a note I had here about, from comments from last time about the dedicated parking. Okay, thank you.
Is there anyone else from the public? I, I thought we would answer those questions while it's fresh, but I do, yeah, I see one other person who would like to come up and speak, if you would like to. Thank you all just for answering those while they were fresh in our minds, so.
Hi.
Ian Corso, 70, 80, and 4th Street.
Great.
And again, kind of similar to what people have been saying, but this was more on the, on the number and trying to cut back the number from the 99 for the restaurant there. And a lot of it might be, I don't know if it's feasible, but within the restaurant, there's 32 bar seats on one side and 14 on the other. And that comes to a total of 46 for the place. If some of that could be cut back, that could cut down on some of the numbers for the restaurant. And also, I think with the, you know, the decreasing of the bar seat would be less more of an impact on the profit versus just seating for actual dining. And then I was, when I was looking through things, it was, I know with Navara's liquor license, it states that they have 30 seats around the bar, but I counted 46 when I was in there. So, when I'm looking here at the, what's proposed above the Food Center, it's, they have a 32-seat bar, so would that get increased with more chairs as time goes on, seating and everything? And also, I don't know if the numbers are, like, say if you're standing around the bar, if you go in, I go to Navara and Abbey quite often, and even if Navara is busy and people are sitting at the bar, other people are coming up chatting or waiting for tables, do those numbers come into account of 99 occupancy numbers? And my other thought was with the good weather, the windows up there open, so I know this, it's just gonna be like hyped to music, you know, for a restaurant, but that kinda washes the air pretty easily. At one point, they had, the end, I think it was someone just kind of making money at the end of the Food Center parking lot, he had an audio and he was playing the guitar and got quite, you know, I could hear it at my house, so I'm just thinking, you know, the noise level two, what it might, how it might impact the neighbors. Again, we've having the, the closings be earlier than was proposed, and that's what a number of people have spoken about. But I do wanna say, with Michael, I mean, I've been through all the changes over the years, you know, I think that with the neighbors, we've always had a really good rapport with Mike. He's always worked with us and modified things after he's listened to what our concerns were. And, and I'm hoping that, I mean, Vance, I think, I don't know if it's, is the restaurant group, like the group of people that he's with, if they could, you know, have the same working kind of with the neighbors and seeing about how we could gear this down, you know? And that's all.
Great, thank you so much. Okay.
Can I ask you a question related to one of those?
Yeah.
So, the, are you going to request the liquor license to be for the 99 seats? Because, you know, the way the building code calculates occupancy, it includes the standing area question, I think that was just proposed, and the number would be higher. But if your liquor license is going to restrict it, then it should be posted for that number. So, I guess my question is, is the liquor license request for 99?
That's the request, yes.
Okay, thanks. And just since you probably couldn't be heard in the Zoom, the answer was yes.
But that means there's only 99 people allowed in the restaurant, right? So, if there's, I mean, how would you monitor that? A guy with a clicker like a doorman and then when it gets to 99, you have to start forming a line? I mean, I hope they get to that point because it'd be busy, but?
That's the difference in if you have tables and having seating.
If your tables are awful, every seat's taken, and you have a lot of people standing, if your capacity is 99 seats, you know you're over capacity.
Right.
But if you have seats that are open and people standing, then you're gonna have to do a head count, right? But if all of your seats are taken, it should be pretty clear.
Now, site plan approval, does that give us permission to say you cannot have more than X amount of people at the bar? Or is that tied to the liquor license?
This is, this is an amendment to the utilization of the enclosed area.
Yeah.
So, we have to go back to the, we have to sort of keep remembering that this is, they have, they have currently, under what is approved to have a restaurant there, they're asking for an increase in the hours, and they're asking for an increase in using the greater capacity of the enclosed area.
But that, what came to us was an enclosed area for seating, for tables, for people to sit down and eat. It's a different use now.
Sure. You lost me. How is it a different use now than, than I'm comparing it to the plate? The plate had sit-down?
They had showed us a plan with, with all tables.
All tables. The, the plan that we approved had tables in that seating area.
Right.
Gotcha.
And that area was open to other?
It was common use.
So, you picked up, picked up lunch at the plate, I mean, you picked up lunch at the Food Center, like a lot of people do, and you could go upstairs and sit there.
Instead of eating in my truck, I totally get it.
Like some people wanted, yeah, okay. All right, I think this is, oh, yes, did you want more?
Nice to speak, please.
Yep, sure, come on.
I just wanted to, I just wanted to say that I'm realizing that hours of operation needs better defining. I was, when I looked at nine o'clock, I looked at, you know, customers walking out the door at nine o'clock, but in the business, obviously, that isn't the case. So, there, there really needs to be some stipulation, and then I'm hearing, you know, Last Call at 10 o'clock or something like that, and, you know, there needs to be, nine o'clock needs to be more defined for this type of restaurant too, because there's a lot longer, you know? The door locks at nine o'clock, you don't seat anybody after 8:30 or something. Last Call is at nine o'clock, not 10, you know? Needs to be, if there isn't some standard definition, we should have one for this. And the other thing I heard too is, you know, when you brought up the pictures of the violations and stuff like that, you know, it was asked how many complaints you had, as if that minimizes the violations. And I, I think you have to realize that a lot of people don't think anything will get done, so they don't complain. It's not, that doesn't make it not a violation, it's still a violation whether somebody complains a lot, and I, you know, a lot of people, I talk to them, they just like, doesn't matter what I say, nothing's gonna happen. So, that's, that's a lot of why people don't complain. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Want to speak tonight? Okay. All right, so, looking at our calendars, I think we could move to continue this until the 10th? Maybe we'll have, that'll give time to give some of the outstanding questions and site plans, the parking.
I would like to make sure that we do have the parking plan for that meeting on the 10th.
Sorry, I didn't hear that.
I'd like to make sure we have the parking plan for the hearing on the 10th, because we're gonna have to continue it again, what we may have to anyway, but without the parking plan, it's gonna just have to be continued. It's just an important component.
Yep. And all dumpsters, yeah, and all dumpsters cited on that, because seeing what I saw, I think there are more dumpsters that will be required, so it's not overflowing, so. Okay. And the delivery schedule, and the dates of delivery, I should say, days of delivery. Okay. Okay, so you were about to make a motion to continue, sorry?
I'm making a motion to continue the public hearing for 10 Bassett Street, site plan approval amendment?
To 7:10?
Yeah. 7:10, October 10th at 7:10?
7:10, yes. Is there a second?
Yep, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you all for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry.
If I, if I can just chime in real quick, just so the folks in the room and watching at home kind of understand, you know, the hearing's been continued 7:05. We did have an earlier start for the meeting to 6:30 to accommodate the MIPC presentation. You know, that may go longer than 35 minutes, so just so folks understand, you know, there will be an adjourned item ahead of this hearing on the 10th.
Okay. Great, thank you. That's good, good point. So, we're at 10:30 right now, I think?
Can I just ask?
Sure.
If Tim needs some feedback from us on the budget priorities?
Yeah.
In your next old business items, I know there's a few things here, it's late, but I just wanted to see if he needed something from us.
At this point, without having a kind of a broader discussion, I think what I'd like to do is probably stick with, I mean, the, the last time we talked about this, there was a relatively lengthy list of potential supplementary budget items. If we don't have time to kind of sort through and prioritize those, you know, with the board's permission, I think there are plenty of things that the board could use extra money for. And I can kind of, you know, present it as, you know, here are a number of priorities, you know, we'd like a supplemental budget request of, you know, I think we asked for $40,000 the last time. I may, I may bump that up to even 50, you know, between, you know, zoning recodification, between site plan approval, between, you know, anything kind of associated with MBTA communities, master plan updates, housing production plan update, you know, there's, there's an even number of things that, you know, we can use to justify a supplemental budget request. So, you know, with the board's permission, I'd like to frame it that way.
Yep.
That's fine.
That's fine with me.
I mean, do you think 50,000 is enough?
That's my thought too, Maggie, I was thinking going for more.
Well, again, you know, I'll, you know, the sky's the limit. You know, do we wanna, I mean, I, I, between all of the things, and I can bring up an email where we talked about the list of things, you know, but, you know, we, we could definitely justify, you know, even more than that, 75,000 to 100,000 dollars.
Because I would rather ask for more and then they say no. I mean, it seems like, and again, what's the average consultant's fee?
Well, let me just?
25,000 dollars?
Writing articles? I mean, we should have a guy on retainer doing that for us.
And just, just to the point, like, I heard some others attended some, you know, conferences or other meetings, a bit, learning a bit more about the MBTA communities, and it may be that other parts of our bylaws need to be updated too. And so, it's not just passing this, but we need to look at other things, Tim, right? I mean, this is something that I think you and I talked briefly about. And so, that codification, that, we're gonna have to do something with MBTA communities, I think it's pretty clear, right? It's, it's the law. So, we're going to, we should think about that, like, it's not just site plan approval, we have ADUs, we have?
Other consultants.
I think you're right. Go for, say, we really, it's a recodification, but it's, and it's fixing corrections, but it's also tying all these things that we know we have to do into something that's comprehensive.
Yeah. I, I mean, like I said, I, I think there's a, I think there's a good justification. Now, obviously, everyone's gonna be, you know, making their wish lists, but I do, you know, I think Maggie's point is, is a sound one, you know? There's plenty of work to be done, I think, and this is not a dig, I mean, there's a lot on the board's plate, you know, just with things that the board is obligated to do between permits and zoning mandates from the state. You know, this other stuff, you know, we do need, you know, consultants to kind of pick up some of the load for some of the things that, you know, maybe are not necessarily mandated but are rightly necessary. So, I think there's a really strong justification for this. So, you know, again, I, I think, you know, I, we can, I, I can put 100,000 dollars on that request and, and write a really strong, you know, narrative to justify it if the board, you know, would have sent us something like that.
I would support that.
Yes.
Yeah, it's great.
Okay. Awesome.
Great.
Okay.
Thank you so much. All right. So, 80, do we give a number then?
100.
100, okay, great.
And then?
Is that enough?
I feel like 100 isn't even enough, but?
I feel like it's not enough.
I mean, you, you'll also have, you know, fingers crossed, your, your traditional, you know?
Some grants.
So, you know?
Grant application.
The traditional 50 per year too.
Yeah.
Right?
I think it's a good start, Tim.
Thank you, okay.
Cool.
All right. So, the good thing is that I think that Blue Hill Avenue will not be ready until the 24th, so that's gonna give us more time for MBTA discussions.
Yeah, and we'll have, and we'll have you teal in with, they had the beginnings of some reporting back to do. If, if we, I, I talked to them this afternoon and said, there's, you wouldn't get on until 10, and if we don't have a full kind of report, but they'll, they'll be able to come back with, with? with responses and feedback from all of the input that the board had for the last meeting.
Great.
And we'll be able to move forward on that.
So I wanted to also address a couple of the, you know, comments that people made during Citizen's Speak. So if we can, uh, Tim, have Tim give us an overview of the scorecard? You know, uh, I mean,
Yeah.
the survey results, since we haven't talked about that recently.
Yeah.
If we can have, um, I don't know if the scorecard is posted online, but if not, can we get that on the website? And then.
Yeah, we can do that.
We can talk about filling in a couple of alternative locations, like through the, through the scorecard. And then, you know, have some, I think it's really important too to, where we're making some suggested changes to districts, that we have a forum. And, you know, Tim facilitated the forums, I think, really well. And I'd like to suggest that we schedule a forum soon, because October 7th is the court. And so we're going, I, I talked to an attorney who said, I'm, I'm not familiar with how these things go, but this attorney said that we'll get an idea from the justices based on the questions that they're asking to get an, kind of an idea where they may be going. And if that's the case, um, you know, maybe we'll say, okay, we haven't really talked, I know Maggie, you've brought up, but if it's not, if the court decides yet that it's not rapid transit, you know, what would our strategy kind of be? So start talking to people about that, even if we don't have a plan. So I'd like to suggest we get a forum in October to get feedback on what we've talked about and what.
Where we are at this point and where we are.
Yeah.
And I think, sorry.
Yeah, I was going to say, would it, um, would the forum be a little bit more like neighborhood specific? So, you know, there are, I think, sites that we all agree on that I think could work?
I think initially, an overview for everyone, because people are very curious about it.
Okay.
And then I think as we get into speci, yeah, I think the LA Street Quarter deserves its own.
Correct, right.
And East Milton deserves its own. And if we go somewhere else, like Randolph Ave, that deserves its own. But right now, every, no one knows really what's been going on much because it's been spotty on our agenda in terms of how much time. But now that UTIL's really engaged and we're starting to get some feedback and we're going to get more at our next meeting.
An alternative.
Yes.
To hear what they think of the alternatives.
Yeah. What direction we're kind of, you know, been talking about? I think it's, it's the right time to get feedback. And, you know, I think if Tim's willing to have UTIL, the two of them kind of facilitate or, you know, present it. And, you know, it's a planning board, it can be a planning board sponsored meeting, but we have them, you know, kind of manage it. Is that something, Tim, that you think you and UTIL could do in October?
We, yeah, we can, we can certainly talk about that. I, I, I don't remember how much of a role they had in our previous, um, you know, public forums, but I think they're definitely capable and prepared to do something like that.
If you don't think you need it and you think, you know, it's fine for.
You did a great job. I think Tim did a great job.
Yeah. Whatever you talk to UTIL, you, you think you two, or you can discuss it and see what you think is best, is, is fine with me. But I'd just like to get it on the calendar and get it, you know, a plan together for, so that we, we can say to people on the 10th. So that's the next meeting we have. Maybe it's the end of October, beginning of November. But, you know, if, if we get a decision before the end of the year, at least people will start to have an idea, you know, what the, what the board's been looking at.
So I mean, just looking at the calendar, should we keep it on a Thursday? Because people seem to know that our meetings are on Thursdays.
Fill, fill it in on another day?
On it, yeah.
Yeah, okay. So like, uh,
Well, when's Halloween? It's the 31st.
Halloween's Thursday, yeah.
The following?
November 7th?
Yep.
So that gives us two more planning board meetings. Okay. So would we want any feedback before then, I guess? What, what do you think, Tim? In terms of timing?
I, I think, um, you know, it's obviously got to be after the next meeting. And, and what I'll say is this, we're going to need more guidance and direction from the board as to what is presented at this forum than, than the last time. I mean, I, you know, for, for reasons that, you know, we don't need to get back into. You know, I was, you know, towards the end, I was kind of flying solo on these forums a bit. You know, this is the planning board's effort. This is going to be the planning board's article. So I'll, we'll definitely want to get some, some strong direction from the board. To that effect, I think, you know, first week in November, you know, gives us a chance to hear from UTIL on the 10th, potentially, you know, get some additional feedback on the 24th and then have, you know, a good conversation about what does the board want to see presented at this forum? And how do they want it presented?
So let's get to the 7th then.
The 7th.
That's one of our scheduled meetings though.
No, the 14th and the 28th will be the, it's the second.
Put it in at the.
All right.
And then, you know, we can start getting.
Although the 28th is the weekend of Thanksgiving, so we're,
Yeah.
Not going to be meeting. Maybe at least that day. But the 7th, I think, let's save that.
Yeah, so let's start getting the word out, you know, on that. And I guess we should see if the council of aging is available then, right?
Yeah, we'll, um, we'll, we'll email.
Okay.
We'll email them tomorrow and get that, um, get that booked.
Great.
Great, okay.
So anything else?
No, I just, I just wanted to make sure that.
Yeah, I, I do want to admit to that, that thank you, because I just.
That was good.
But, and then, you know, on that site plan approval, I do think it's going to take a little bit of time. I, I've spent a little bit of time on it. And I think we need a chunk of time at a meeting.
I was even thinking about a, yeah, maybe even a separate meeting just for site plan approval. We're getting that on maybe the 24th to really focus on that. It's, I agree, it's, and, you know, it's interesting as we go through our site plan approvals, things come, you know, there's certain things that we just, we want to make sure that we have in our site plan approvals.
Yeah, I think we need to think about even, we talked about, like if it's an over amendment use or, but I think even conditions like in the business district or then when it's a business district, that's, or business in a residential, it raises different issues too. When you're right next to single families and it's a business operation and the hours. So I do think we need to kind of think about, okay, which kind of site plan approvals are we seeing?
And that was one of the examples that we, that Tim gave us. And it's, off the top of my head, I don't have it in front of me.
Georgetown, yeah.
It was Natick. Because they did address that, I believe, in theirs. And they had certain conditions on whether it's a small change, you know, small site plan approval project versus a large. I thought Natick's was good.
And then I think like on ADUs, if it's in, in existing, within an existing, it's, you know, maybe treated, like, does it really need us to review it if it's in existing? It's just maybe where the parking goes. But if it's, you know, a new structure, you know, maybe that's treated differently.
Yeah, we have a different, yeah.
And I'm still a little hung up a little bit because I'm not, our site plan approval process is what, like, a page? You know, or maybe a little bit more than that. But then there are others which are, you know, as I said before, like 30 pages. So it's trying to figure out.
How much?
Yeah. When does it become a rule or a regula, a planning board rule and regulation versus site plan approval? And if you issue a site plan approval, when do the rules and regulations kick in? Like what triggers what?
I mean, it even goes back to the, the rule, isn't it the rules and regs that have like the out-of-date roadways and so forth? So, I mean, that's why a comprehensive look at the whole bylaw is really important, I think. But, I mean, certain things with MBTA communities, if we wanted to keep site plan approval outside of the MBTA community zoning, then we need to address the site plan approval, at least to, to a certain level.
Yep.
And it can always be revised.
And I think we look at the one that you did, that you worked on, because I think there was a lot of good, good material in that.
Yeah. That didn't, you know, necessarily address the over amendment. But I, I do think, um, between, it, we have a good, a lot of good material. We just need to kind of, I think, spend the time to kind of think about what, yeah, what makes the most sense for us.
And I guess that's my confusion as I looked at Westports and it says Rules and Regulations of the Westport Planning Board Site Plan Approval.
It's not in their bylaw there.
It's, yeah, so that's why.
I don't think it has any enforceability. I think.
Ours is, ours is in our zoning.
It is, yeah.
So that's why.
So we can, we can reject, just a minute. We can disapprove a project based on site plan approval? We can shoot a project down?
If it, if it doesn't meet the criteria, meaning if we find it has a detrimental effect to the abutters for whatever reason, or safety, those are things that if we, if we could support in court and legitimately say this, we see this as a detrimental effect and this is, and back it up, we can deny it.
So I, I took one of the workshops at the Citizen's Planning Training Collaborative on site plan.
Defense of site plan approval?
Yeah, well, and on both writing different, decisions that are defensible, but also on site plan approval. And it's, site plan approval is typically for uses that are, are as of right or they are approved uses. So it's only really if there's the impacts are such that can't be mitigated. So they were saying like it should be rarely denied. What you're really trying to do is make sure that you, you know, consider all of the impacts and address them.